All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July eleventh. Uh, meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. It's good to see everybody. And uh, while the room fills up, if you could, please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. Into the Republic for which it's one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Today is July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled five thirty P M start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on Friday, July seventh, and resunshined on July tenth. Uh, that is a Monday, Monday, July tenth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right. Nice work, Cam. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair, uh, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
And Chairman Langston.
Here.
All right, we have five commissioners present. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mike, could you swear in the stop, please?
I see Cameron Mallory. Matt Francisco. Do you guys want any testimony to give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, Cam, I know we have respondents. You want to, uh, read it off?
Yeah, so we have eight items that are being carried to July twenty-fifth. Um, I'm gonna share my screen and just, uh, go through the agenda real quick. Um, or you know what? Actually, uh, I'm just gonna read through the list. Um. I seem to have closed out of the agenda. All right, um. So. First, we have the cell antenna for dish wireless. Uh, item thirteen on the agenda, address is thirty to thirty-two Central Avenue. They have.
Cam, I, I don't mean to interrupt. That's item fourteen.
Fourteen. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Pories.
Okay. Item fourteen on the agenda. Uh, this is a cell antenna, address is thirty to thirty-two Central Avenue. They're requesting to carry with preservation. Actually, I'm sorry, they did not notice. They're just requesting to carry to July twenty-fifth. Uh, item fifteen on the agenda. This is another minor site plan for a cell antenna, dish wireless again, addresses two hundred thirty-four Sudan Avenue, requesting to carry to July twenty-fifth. Um, and then we're gonna go all the way over to item twenty-two on the agenda. They are one oh one Storms Avenue, case P twenty-two dash one sixty. They are requesting to carry to July twenty-fifth with preservation of notice. Uh, item twenty-three on the agenda, next item, case P twenty-three dash zero one three. They are requesting to carry with preservation of notice to July twenty-fifth. Uh, that is address two thousand nine hundred sixty-six John F. Kennedy Boulevard. Um, then we jump to.
And my understanding was that was gonna be adjourned and they were gonna renotice.
Thank you, Santo. Yes, that is the technicality. Um. So let's go over that one more time. Item twenty-three on the agenda, address two nine six six JFK Boulevard. They are requesting to carry. They are going to renotice. So they are journeying. They will send new notice to property owners within a two hundred foot radius. Uh, but they will be on the July twenty-fifth agenda. Um. All right, uh, twenty-five on the agenda, address is twenty-seven to twenty-nine Fayette Avenue. Case P twenty-two dash two-ten. They are requesting carry with preservation of notice. Um, twenty-six on the agenda. This is case P twenty-three dash zero nine zero. It's a minor site plan at one seventy-eight Monticello Avenue. They are carrying to, uh, July twenty-fifth. Um, twenty-seven on the agenda. Case P twenty-three dash zero seventy-seven. This is, uh, for conditional use at thirty-five twenty-three JFK Boulevard. Uh, they are requesting to carry with preservation of notice to July twenty-fifth. And the very last item on the agenda, item twenty-eight. Address is two ninety-eight Central Avenue, another conditional use. They are requesting to carry with preservation of notice to July twenty-fifth. Um, so in total, that's eight items on the agenda that are requesting to carry to July twenty-fifth.
Okay, thanks, Cam. Uh, so let's jump right into old business. We're gonna call case P two-two dash one nine seven.
A-actually. I'm sorry, Chair. I noticed that the attorney for the cellphone antenna applications would like to speak. Do you mind? Promote him? Okay.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
All right, promoting Kevin Jones.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay? It's Kevin Jones from.
We can, Council. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening to you. Uh, just, and Cameron, just to reiterate what Cameron said, uh, we have to carry, I think, because we only have five. You have enough to open the meeting, but I believe, uh, Commissioner Cruz must recuse himself on the wireless application, so we wouldn't have to, to properly vote on that application. So we do respectfully request carrying to the, uh, July twenty-fifth.
You got it, and we'll, uh, get you right up top, and we apologize for the delay, and, uh, we'll get you in and out if we can.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care, all.
You too. Have a good night. All right, so let's call, uh, case P two-two dash one nine seven is a minor site plan for one twenty-four Glenwood Ave. Can we bring up, uh, Mr. Wong?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, can everybody hear me all right?
We can, Council. Um. Obviously, uh, I think you've talked to Tanya today. We do have a problem with your application tonight. Uh, there is a fire escape that's uh, illegal according to building code on the outside of the building. So we're gonna need a second means of egress.
Right, so.
In that building.
Sure. So, Mr. Chair, if I can address that right at the outset, I was gonna address it, uh, have my architect address it directly, but I can address it at the outset. Similar to receiving, um, you know, when you get comments from engineering or, or traffic or city planning or anything like that. We received that note from the building department that the exterior fire escape would not be acceptable on new construction. While it does comply with the D C A standards, Jersey City, every municipality has the right to kind of overrule that on new construction if they choose, and it's our understanding in the last few days that that is what the city's building department has elected to do, and it's standard across the board. That said, as you'll hear from our project architect, it is a very simple fix. It is simply going to be flipped from the exterior instead of a fire escape to a fire stair on the interior. Um, it'll kill a little bit of square footage on each floor, but there will be no change to build to unit count, bedroom count. Um, use, unit distribution, anything like that. So we view it as a, uh, what I'll call a condition of approval if the application is approved. Um, in that it, it will simply be complied with. We have no choice but to comply.
Counsel, I'm not comfortable going forward with it until we see that on a drawing. Uh, until it's available on our data portal, until the whole board has a chance to look at it as well as the public. Um, you know, obviously, there's a lot of public interest in this. And I'm not willing to go forward until we see that drawn on a print. And the planning department has a chance to look at that as well.
That's, listen, I understand, and obviously, it's this board's discretion. I just, uh, I would be doing a disservice if I didn't just at least, you know, put on the record that, uh, we feel it's something that's easy enough to handle, and furthermore, this, this, this really just came up within the last ten days, so we really couldn't submit revised plans anyways. Unfortunately, if you'll note, Mr. Chair, this application was originally heard March fourteenth. Um, remains an as-of-right application. There's been no change in that regard. Uh, we took the opportunity to meet with the community twice nevertheless to make facade changes, try to appease neighbors. Um, you know, we had other issues come up. There was a technical glitch, uh, with the portal that forced us to adjourn it back in, I think it was back in early June, then the meeting wasn't held two weeks ago. So the only thing I would say is, is it just th- this application, and it's not, it's not the fault of this board, of course, but it's, it's something that continues to be adjourned and adjourned and dragged on. And the only thing I'll say is, you know, my client maintains having an as-of-right project, bought the property with the intent of developing as-of-right, and the only thing he does feel somewhat prejudiced by the continued, you know, again, to no fault of this board, just continued adjournment and adjournment, and so I understand the board's desire to review it. I'm certainly not going to, uh, to strenuously object. I just felt that it's necessary to put on the record that there have been these multiple, you know, adjournments, including a renotice actually for tonight because the last meeting was missed. And, uh, and we would, if it's okay, again, love to be able to, to proceed accordingly.
Um, can we get that drawing done and into planning by the end of the week?
I mean, I would, I can text the architect and find out. Um. You know, I, again, I don't believe that it's a, it's a big one. We just did not want to do it within ten days and run into a risk of, of, you know, putting something in front of you that was not submitted in advance, tended per the M L U L. But I can find, find out from the architect.
Okay, Santo, are we comfortable carrying notice then tonight? And moving it to the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable carrying it to the twenty-fifth. I don't believe this matter was noticed as it's a minor site plan, Council, so.
Yeah, Santos. Santo, we did miss Mr. Lampy. We actually did renotice this one, um, due to the interest of the public. You are correct. We did not need to, but you know, my client also felt that he wanted to come in belt and suspenders here, not run into any issue of somebody suggesting that this was, anything was done under the radar. So I believe my office communicated with Cam earlier today, um, with regard to the revised affidavit package.
All right, so either way, Chairman, notice isn't required on the minor site plan, but Council and the applicant have noticed. The matter can be carried to the twenty-fifth. Uh, preserving that notice for whatever value that is worth. And assuming that Council's architect is able to get those drawings in prior to that ten-day cutoff, which I think is Friday, in all fairness and candor to everybody. Uh, then it can proceed at the twenty-fifth. Otherwise, Chairman, we can continue to carry and preserve the notice so long as it's on a regular meeting that we have a quorum for, so.
Of course.
An answer to the Chair's question. We can, we can carry more than, than one meeting. Uh, if necessary, but hopefully, this will be addressed and, and reached on the twenty-fifth, uh, if they're able to get those, those drawings in. Sounds like it's a simple fix. I can't draw a straight line, so I don't dare say anything simple, but, uh, if it is, then, then they should be able to get it done in a couple of days.
And Counsel, I, I do apologize for the last meeting that we couldn't, uh, get that quorum. But just for, you know, to, to jump off your comments there, um, just for clarity, the, the applicant chose to pull that design on the first meeting that we held, the first public meeting. Um, that was, you know, by their own doing, so.
Certainly.
Uh, you know, I don't know why the applicant feels prejudice. But you know, that first one was, was pulled before we could vote on it. Um, obviously, there's a design problem now with a, an illegal fire escape on the outside of the building. So you know, these feel like self-imposed problems. Um. Like granted, the, the one meeting, that's on us, that we couldn't get a quorum, but obviously, we all have lives outside of this board and, um, you know, these things happen. So once every couple of years, we're gonna miss a meeting.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I, as I said, I, I certainly don't. It's, it's not a blame. It's not a, it's, it's a reality. Um, you know, at the initial meeting, Mr. Krail was initially the planner on it, had re, if I recall, had recommended to the board. He wanted further review of the design when some comments came up. So yeah, to your point, it was certainly our decision, um, to do that. Uh, we felt that it was in good faith, and I'm certainly not gonna oppose any motion to adjourn this. Um, I, I just, I felt it necessary to put out into the universe and on the record. Um, you know, kind of what we've been dealing with over the last few months, and I, my architect did just text me. He said he has no issue getting in revisions by Friday. That's a non-issue. Um, the only thing that I would ask if it would be okay with the board is if we could remain at the top of the agenda. I just, you know, I would hate to, to carry it only to, to get pushed off even further, um, if that's all right.
Sure, we can put you in on their, uh, old business at the top.
Okay, and I appreciate the board's time. Again, not certainly, you know, I know you, you know me, there's, there's never an intention to, uh, to be evasive or anything of that nature. Um, this was just a comment that arose, and we were just, you know, just felt it would be inappropriate to submit this sometime either this week or end of last week and run into an issue with, uh, jurisdiction or anything of that nature.
Of course, and, and you mentioned belt and suspenders, and that's what this board's intent is here. Um. I prefer to have a, a clean, clean record, so I, I don't want to design something on the fly. Uh, so we're gonna see those prints. We're gonna review those prints. They'll be available for the public to review on the data portal. And, uh, with that said, let's move on. So we're gonna, uh, carry case P two-two dash one nine seven. It's a minor site plan for one twenty-four Glenwood Avenue. Uh, right now, it would date certain of July twenty-fifth, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. I'll see you a little bit for another one.
All right. Uh, so let's move on to the item B is case P two-three dash one zero one is a one-year extension for fifty-seven Virginia Avenue.
Promoted Mike Higgins.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, Michael Higgins of Castano Quigley and Chirami on behalf of the N A Property LLC, the applicant. Um, we're here seeking a, a one-year extension of prior approvals. Um. These were originally granted on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Um, memorialized by resolution on February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and expired two years later on February sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we're seeking only a one-year extension, which would take us to February sixteen, two thousand twenty-four. This is the first extension that we're seeking for this application, and, um, the basis for it is, uh, firstly, um, approvals fell into the middle of the coronavirus pandemic, which delayed the applicant. And secondly, as I'm sure the, the board, the board knows, um, the original architect was Mupti Basaj, who uh, passed away earlier this year. And, uh, unfortunately, and the, the combination of these things delayed the applicant from, from pulling the permits that they need. So we're seeking a one-year extension. That's, uh, basically the entire, uh, application for tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. I have no questions. Uh, anybody else from the board? Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this one-year extension at fifty-seven Virginia Ave. Please raise your hand, and if you're calling in, you want to comment on this, please, uh, press star nine to raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I move to close.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, only just going to add that they, uh, please agree to all the conditions, the original approval, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam, and Counsel, you're okay with that?
Of course, we, we.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-three dash one zero one is presented to our board tonight.
Second it.
All right, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner, Doctor, uh, Dr. Desai. Uh, one, one more for the mic.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to new business. Item nine is the review and discussion of, uh, certified artists. Susan Evans, Timothy Lyons, Dan Bassini, Meredith Burns, and formal action may be taken tonight.
Okay, um, and, and just as a reminder, uh, after this, we're gonna go to the embankment. Okay.
Yes, you know, I'm gonna put it right after this.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we've all had a chance to, uh, see the uh, applications on the data portal. Uh, all the artists meet the criteria, and, um, does anybody have any questions? Do we want any, any further explanation from Cam?
No.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Is anybody here from the public that wants to comment on these artist certifications?
Seeing no public, I move to close the public.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Cam, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, just that they meet the criteria to be, uh, considered artists by the, uh, Artist Certification Board, and, um, nice mix of musicians and visual artists, and Stafford recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve the review and discussion of certified artists. Suzanne Evans, Timothy Lyons, Dan Bassini, Meredith Burns, and forward to, uh, City Council with their favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded for approval and forwarding to City Council.
Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Green.
Aye.
And Chairman Langston.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, we are gonna jump ahead to item twenty. I need to move that up tonight. Uh, that's gonna be case P two-three dash one 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 is the review and discuss. I'm sorry, review and discussion of amendments to the Louis Munoz Marin Boulevard redevelopment plan regarding permitted land uses and the addition and clarification of developer obligations for District Two of the plan. Uh, formal action may be taken tonight.
Hi, Commissioners. Good to see everybody after, uh, a bit of a hiatus. Um, I think actually, last time I was before you might be the last time we talked about this. And so I was gone, but I don't know if we would know it.
Well, thanks for making it back tonight.
Yeah.
So Chairman, just before Mallory starts, I recuse on these matters as I represent property owners that have, uh, property within that area, so I'm gonna step away if you can just give me a call when the matter's finished. I'll come back on.
You got it, Counsel. Thank you. And Mallory, uh, with that said, uh, I know you're not the applicant tonight, but I usually save this speech for an applicant when Santo has to recuse. Uh, I'm comfortable going forward. I think I've, uh, been here long enough to understand the law and what we're allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. Um. But at any time, if we do need to consult with outside counsel, reserve that right to carry this application until we can do so.
Okay, so, um, just a quick update before I pull up the document, but basically, uh, what has happened is this board was presented with some changes to the plan, uh, back in late September of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the board unanimously recommended those changes to City Council. And we brought those changes before City Council in October of two thousand twenty-two. Um, at that point in time, the councilman did table the changes just because he was looking for some more clarification um, for certain things regarding the redevelopment agreement. And that conversation has been in progress in the months since. Um, and then coming back in the spring, the conversations regarding the redevelopment agreement have been um, concluding, and we all felt, uh, between city planning and legal, the city's legal team, we felt that it would, uh, be to the city's benefit if we just, um, added some of that more detailed language in, back into the plan regarding developer obligations, uh, that were discussed and further fleshed out through the redevelopment agreement conversation. So basically, as that conversation progressed, um, more specific commitments were put on the table, and we thought it was important to include those in the redevelopment plan and not just the redevelopment agreement. Uh, so that's more or less the scope of what is before you tonight. Um, so I am gonna pull up the document, uh. Second. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
We can, yes.
Okay, so, um, just for clarification, as we're looking through, anything highlighted in yellow was a change that the board already reviewed and already recommended to City Council in the fall. Um, so that's stuff that you have seen before already. Anything new is highlighted in that, uh, bright blue color. So that's text that has been changed since the last time you saw and recommended this document. And again, we just wanted to make sure that we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is because we were adding new language regarding specific dot, design standards and developer obligations. We thought it would just be more kosher if we brought this back to you guys for a final recommendation before presenting it to City Council again. Um, so this will just take a few minutes, and, um, you know, we can go over any questions if you have any at the end. Um, so I'm starting here on page nine. There were also a lot of grammatical errors we picked up. If you look at the cover page of this plan, it was originally adopted in nineteen seventy-five and was actually, um, adopted under a, a different name. So it's, there'd been a couple iterations of the plan, and, and with that, some kind of typos and grammatical references um, that were broken through a series of amendments. So we've just cleaned up some of that, um, very minor changes that you'll see highlighted in blue. And I'm just gonna talk to you tonight about the more substantive, uh, changes. So the first one being here on page nine with the editor's note, that is language that is reviewed and drafted by our, uh, city's legal counsel. Um, they just kind of wordsmithed that from the previous iteration that you saw about how, um, the land has to be transferred back to the city in order for these development rights to be, uh, for a developer to be eligible for the development rights within District Two. Um, so that's, um, nothing design standard. Again, this is just legal language, um, that prefaces this section, uh, that there were some changes made to. The main one being, uh, this last sentence in blue here, that, um, regardless of whether the development pursues or, um, the new zoning takes effect, we just wanted to clarify that railroad and trail uses are permitted uses within this district. So that was kind of an oversight on the last iteration. Um, obviously, we all know the history of, this is really pertaining to block one of the embankment. Uh, the elevated block, so that is the block fronting Marin Boulevard. Um, so it's between Marin and Manila Ave. And, um, you know, we've contemplated a development project within this plan for many years. Uh, we took, made some changes to that when we brought them to you in the fall, and, um, there was kind of just an oversight that with the permitted uses, uh, in those changes, that we didn't kind of carry over, uh, the railroad use and trail use. So we just wanted to make sure that those uses were qualified and qualified as a, a permitted use regardless of whether the development project exists. Uh, moving forward, I'm gonna take you to page eleven, which is where the next kind of, uh, substantive content change happens, and it really, I, I would focus on this, um, second chunk of, of blue on the page, the larger paragraph, um, and this is just adding in those details I was talking about of the developer obligation. So this gets a little bit more specific about the public right-of-way that they will be building on block one. And, um, what that, some of the features that the public right-of-way is to include, which, uh, includes a thirty-foot a fifteen-foot wide, uh, grand stairway with, providing access to the upper level of that block, which is where, you know, the embankment level, that elevated uh, park will exist. So we have a thirty-foot preserved right-way. They're obligated to build the grand staircase to that within a certain distance of the Marin corner, so that um, the whole right-of-way will be anchored towards the north side of the block. Uh, they are obligated to provide a bicycle channel within that grand stairway, so that, uh, people be using their bikes on the, uh, elevated parkway are, aren't just queuing up for an elevator and dependent on an elevator to get up and down from that elevated park to the street level. So once they get, run to the, end of the embankment, um, they'll be able to kind of use that channel on the side of the staircase to guide their bike down to the street level. Uh, another obligation that was clarified here is, um, the building of two public restrooms. So there'll be two public restrooms on this block uh, that are for use of the, the users of the right-of-way. So those are not to be, uh, exclusive to the residents of the development itself. They, they are obligated to be public. Um, and a, um, uh, the other, uh, main component here is that the, this portion, this kind of eastern um, edge of the block one of the embankment shall be designed to be able to, um, structurally handle the load of a bridge in the future. So they're not going to be building the bridge on this portion. They're gonna be building a bridge on the other side of the block from Manila, across Manila Ave, from block one to block two. They will not be building a bridge across Marin Boulevard, but they are to design the whole development project so that it can handle a bridge landing here in the future. Um, so that's another obligation that we clarified. Uh, moving forward on to page twelve, I think this is the, the next main, uh, thing for us to kind of discuss in terms of newer content. We, uh, took a little bit more definition to some of the preservation of the embankment structure itself. So on block one, they are required to preserve some of the existing stone structure. Um, that language is a little vague in the last pass that we did, and as we've had more discussions and as things have moved further, um, in the project process, we have a better understanding of, um, the kind of more metrics, uh, of what will be preserved. So, uh, we worked with historic preservation on this language and basically set a minimum limit to, um, the length of the embankment stone structure that they have to preserve on that block. So previously, we just talked about, you can see in yellow here that they would save a wraparound on Sixth Street, and we wanted to actually put some numbers. In yellow here that they would save a wraparound on Sixth Street and we wanted to actually put some numbers to that. Language of a wraparound. So we've defined that what that wraparound is um from the corner at Manila onto Sixth Street and then also what that wraparound is. Um, from Manila, there's an alleyway. On the property line and how how back the structure must be saved from there. So that would be the next major kind of content change for you all to review. Um, and then lastly, I would say um just some design standards for the ground level of that block one. Uh, where there will be new construction. So this is where they're not preserving the existing structure and they're building new structure. Um, we just put some more standards for um kind of primary facade materials and not treating that as a backup house parking garage since that is a major frontage. On two sides, both on Marin Boulevard and on Sixth Street. Um, outside of that, I think this is very kind of just like small wordsmithing. As I said, you guys have had a chance to review this for a little over a month now. So. Um, if you have any questions on language further down, uh, but really, I think I went over what was significant from a content standpoint. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but uh, you know, we've worked with. Legal counsel, we've worked with uh the legal counsel for the redevelopment agency on this. We've worked with the developer. And his team on this, and we've also worked with the embankment coalition. So everybody's been involved in this process since uh you uh saw this and, you know, we're eager to get this in front of council this summer and get this all wrapped up. It's been. Uh, you know, hanging out for a little too long right now. So um, like I said, we just want to get these changes back in front of you and get and get the process closed out.
Understood. Thank you, Mallory. And um, I have no questions. I've had a chance to go over the whole plan and uh. You know, I do think that. It it's mostly just uh updates and um. But now uh, I have no questions. Anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, Mallory. If you could just uh stop your screen share and uh. It's good to have you back. So um. At this time, let's open it up for public comment. If there's anybody here from the public that wants to comment on this application. Uh, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand on this. Anybody from public?
There's seen a public, I move to close the public.
I second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um. Now, obviously, we have your recommendation, uh, so move to a motion.
Do you care? I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve and accept. Uh, the review and discussion of amendments to the Luis Munoz Marin Boulevard redevelopment plan. Regarding permitted land uses and the addition and clarification of developer obligations for District Two of the plan. Uh, and uh, sent to uh city council with a favorable recommendation for formal adoption.
Second you.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay, a motion for approval, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Green.
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Hi.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to item ten. It's case P two two dash two two zero is a preliminary and final major site plan with variances. For two twenty five Philip Street.
Voting Chuck Harrington.
Let's uh, Council, before you jump on, uh, let's just make sure we have Santo back online. I did text him.
Okay, Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Santo. Uh, do we have Mr. Harrington on?
He's joined. Oh, I promoted Charles Hyde. Darn it. Okay, Chuck's joining.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council.
Yes, maybe before I start, if I could ask for some other of our experts to be promoted.
Is Charles Hyde on your team?
Charles is on our team.
Oh, okay, I just demoted him. Okay, he's back.
Okay, then you have Lenny Savino from Langen Engineering. Oh, Russ Maida. From GRT. Uh, Ishmael Levia. From GRT. I mean, from Ishmael Leva Architects.
Okay, well, what was, who was that last one?
Ishmael Leva, L E V Y A. I'm sorry, L E Y V A.
Okay.
Okay, and then you have Runit Cha, C H H A Y A.
Okay.
And then Gary Dean.
Okay, and and who was the first person after Charles again? I don't think they joined.
Uh, Lenny, Lenny Savino.
No, maybe they they didn't see the.
I'll try. Their hand is raised, Cam.
Oh, okay, there we go. All right, there we go. That's everybody.
Okay. All right, so uh, for the record, Charles Harrington of Conne Foley on behalf of the applicant tonight. Um, I asked first uh before giving a summary that uh. They have the notices reviewed and uh marked into evidence as we did re-notice specifically for this meeting.
Mr. Harrington, the notice that I have was for the June twenty seventh.
We did provide our notices to planning.
Yeah, it it is available on the website. Um, I'm, I don't know, to be.
All right, let me pull up the link. I suspect it's the same. Content of the notice would be.
It should be.
It is. The only, the only thing it changed was the date.
Right. Just bear with me one second here.
Um. I will email it to you, Santo.
I was just waiting for it to load off the uh. Can you email it to me, Matt? The one that I'm looking at on the agenda also is. For the twenty seventh.
I'm actually having trouble locating it. One moment. I could have sworn I received this, but I am not finding in my inbox.
I know we sent them over. I'm trying to find my emails that who sent them. Uh, Matt, the one was sent on July sixth at one oh four from Naomi Vader, V A T E R. Okay.
You found it?
Uh huh.
Santo, it should be in your inbox now.
Just popped up. It's not letting me open it. Were you able to open it, Matt?
It is a file format that I'm unfamiliar with.
You want me to scan it and send it to you real quick?
I don't see any other option right now. So yes.
Okay, yeah, I just sent it to you, Matt. Send it over, Santo.
Now, I haven't seen it, if you have, uh, it might be in your inbox.
I just sent it to Santo too. Sorry, I couldn't find his email.
All right, I received it. Chairman, I'm going to receive the affidavit of publication proof mailing with respect to the application. It does identify that the. Meeting is being held tonight via the Zoom link. With a five thirty start time. All does appear to be in order. In market is A one for the record.
All right, thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
Okay, thank you, and I'll ask them not to use that format again, Matt. Um, so. Uh, okay, so um, tonight, what uh, we're here uh to present what we refer to commonly as Scholars Village. Uh, it is um, you know, lot four point oh four in block two one five zero four. This lot was created. By a subdivision that was approved by this board uh specifically for the residential portion of the SciTech City campus. Um, so this would be the third component of the SciTech City. Uh, project and campus that that uh with the first two components having been before this board. Edgeworks being the first uh phase, if you will, or component. Uh, and the the high school uh was the the second um component that was presented uh to this board uh by by the county. Uh, this uh, the the property now is vacant. It has been cleared and it is is in, it is being prepared uh for. Uh, all the proposed developments. Um, this uh project will also include some some minor retail. Uh, uses as part of it. Uh, you'll. Uh, you'll see it also will have a public garden that that'll be uh open to the public that we believe is a nice uh feature as part of the campus uh feel. Um, the project uh is composed of two uh residential um. Twelve-story buildings that are connected by by one residential lobby. Uh, and that you'll see during the present presentation. Private, um, provides for this corridor view um out to the east, which we think is is a pretty. Pretty uh substantial um component and element of of this project. Uh, it will have uh five hundred total residential units. Uh, all of the units will be uh market rate units. Uh, it is proposing a hundred and fifty onsite parking spaces within the buildings. Uh, and there will be uh an opportunity. And there will be an opportunity for overflow parking at the lot to the south of the project, which this board approved as part of the Edgeworks approval, if necessary. The the applicant and developer is a lease, less C of the property. And what I mean by that is they entered into a ground lease with SciTech City LLC, which is the designated redeveloped by the JCRA. The the project will be 100% union. And my client has already had discussions with the trades to to prepare for for the construction, which they hope in the event this is approved, they hope to get into the ground in early 2024. For the record, we have had two community meetings as part of this project. One, we scheduled through Councilwoman Ridley. And we had that one in person at the Liberty Science Center. That was not well attended. It had maybe 15 to 20 people. So at the request of June Jones of the Morris Canal CDC, we had another community meeting as well. That one was via Zoom. That I'm sure you'll hear from some people tonight, you know, not everybody agrees with what with what is being presented. But, you know, we believe notwithstanding that that this is a really transformational project that we're presenting to you that is going to define the SciTech City campus and then really then transform this area, you know, that has been underutilized. Well, not used really whatsoever, except for junkyard at one point for for the past, I don't know how many years. So that with that being said, we are requesting four variances, all C variances. One for the maximum relief from the maximum building coverage. One for relief from the maximum building height. One for relief from the minimum number of parking spaces. And the last one for the maximum number of signs. We have five witnesses tonight. We're all they are all going to testify off of one slide deck, which we will introduce and mark as an exhibit at the introduction of the the first witness. And with that said, our first witness tonight is our civil engineer, which will be Mr. Savino from Langen Engineering. So I'm going to ask that he be sworn in and sworn in by the board.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Before we do that, I do see Councilman Gilmore's office has a hand raised. Obviously, out of respect for the councilman, if they want to get a statement on record before any testimony is taken. I'll entertain that. So if we could promote the councilman.
Councilman's been promoted.
Thank you, Ken.
We can wait until after testimony.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, counsel, go ahead then.
Okay, then, yeah, if we can move forward, Mr. Savino to be sworn in and then qualified.
And when you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to, I'm sorry, can you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure. It is Leonard Savino, spelled L E O N A R D, last name Savino, S A V I N O.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
I was just going to comment on Mike's glitch there. He's a machine. Sometimes we buffer. All right. So Mr. Savino, obviously, we've qualified you on the pass. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
All right, great. So, Ketchup?
Yeah, before we start, Mr. Savino, I'd like to mark this as A2. And if you could describe it for the record.
Mr. Harrington, you'll tell us obviously number of slides and you'll provide this at the end of the hearing. And anything else that's going to be presented that wasn't included, whether it's a slide presentation or exhibit, what have you, we can keep marking in sequential order. So A2 will be whatever this slide presentation is. Just give us the number of pages. It's Scholars Village Project, July 11, 2023.
And it is a slide deck consisting of 40 slides that has been compiled by the respective experts so that they can all use the same slide deck during their presentations.
Perfect. Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Savino. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much.
Feel free to tell me to change slides. I'm sorry, I'm Reston Meta and you'll qualify me later, but I'm running the presentation. So Lenny, just tell me what you need and I'll change slides for you.
Okay, appreciate that, Russ. Actually, you might as well go to that next slide. Okay. So as counsel mentioned, this, the subject lot is Lot 404, Block 21504, 2.17 acres created by the subdivision you see before you, which was before the board had approved and filed. The lot, the subject lot is fronting down where the bend you see there in Phillips Street is. It's a long, narrow lot. Next slide, please. So this is a survey of the existing condition. So I'd just like to take a minute and explain in a little bit more detail what what is there. It was previously occupied by Jersey City Municipal Utility Authority. Their portion that they are retaining is the upper right corner with the two buildings shown. That kind of wobbly looking structure has since been demolished to make way for the development of both Edgeworks and our project. The site is also tightly packed gravel and vegetation, light vegetation covered. And there was also a tank that had been removed. And the whole site is generally in clear state and ready for redevelopment. There were two points of access. There's a chain link fence around the side. There's two points of access. One is just to the left off of Phillips Street. And the other one is upper right corner coming out of the back of the JCMU facilities. The grades on the sites range from about elevation 18 along sheet north there, which is the northwestern edge of the site. It's about elevation 18 comes down. Generally, the site slopes down to Phillips to roughly about an average elevation of about eight. And the slopes on the site range from about one and a half percent to about 5%. So with the slope and grade in that fashion and the existing condition, generally the stormwater and the existing condition flows down to Phillips Street and ends up in catch basins and collection along Phillips Street into the city system. Next slide, please. So moving to our site plan, which was part of the package that was provided. And you can see the proposed structure. It's one building with two towers and a lobby in the center. The two towers are 12 stories each with the East Tower, which is to the right sheet right, has 72 structure parking spaces, 250 residential units. On the west side, she left also 12 stories, so the 250 units, 79 parking spaces. There are, as counsel mentioned, there is some small commercial space that will be on the ground floor of each of the towers, and that'll be described in more detail by the architects. With respect to the Phillips Street improvements, because we have two towers, we have proposed and are shown two drop off areas for both loading and unloading and also for for drop off and pickup located strategically near the doorways for the appropriate needs. There's also what's proposed as a dual bike lane in discussions with members of planning. We had walked through that a bit and understood and have provided. Thank you very much for closing up on that. On the opposite side of the street, a two-way bike lane with a two-foot buffer. I think it's worth noting that that is a design that is in accordance with the Jersey City Bike Way Design Guide, dated September 2019. Section 3C does allow for the four, the four-way in either direction and the two for upper, which is what we're providing. And those fit within the edge of pavement pretty well and allow for us to construct what you see here, which is the drop offs. Also worth noting is the public garden. Now that we're close up there, you can see behind the lobby that kind of shaded area with a little squiggly walkway around it. That's going to be described in more detail by our landscape architect, but that is the garden area behind the building. It actually faces that timber walkway, which is a 15-foot wide walkway. That's kind of in that hatched line running across the sheet left to right, where we have connections from our building in to that walkway. So directional signage, there are stop signs that are provided at the two entry points. So the one entry point you can see on the right, it's a 22-foot wide parking entry exit with 32-foot opening depress curve. And there are signs there for entry and exit. There are stop signs there. And there's also signage for now that we are close up here for the drop off and the loading zones. So similar to the east, if you can just slide sheet west a little there, Russ, now that you're close up.
Yep.
Similarly, the drop offs in the loading areas, you can see those little bends in off of the striped line. And the entrance for the western tower is shown in the upper left corner there. Pedestrian access is not only from the rear, which is part of the overall development, but also we are providing a minimum five-foot wide sidewalk, which is running along the entire frontage along Phillips Street. It was worth noting, there was one comment about some of the sidewalk being within our property and some portion of it being out in the right of way. And there will be discussions about easements related to that, which I believe is the option, one of the options discussed in the comment letter. The applicant will continue discussions, but we are providing the sidewalk, the drop offs, the appropriate width roadway, and also the the bike lane as required. And with respect to building services, since we are looking at the tower on the west side, what will happen is you see that little shaded box in the upper left corner, off the upper left corner of the building. That is a just a concrete pad that will be screened with landscaping to the sheet right. And that'll provide an opportunity for both recycling and and trash to be rolled out and placed there for pickup and then rolled back in after pickup. Similarly, on the right-hand side for the East Tower, Russ, if you can slide back over there, I can wrap up over there. For the East Tower, we are providing a rather wide open concrete area next to the drop off that will allow for a rollout from that garage entry for trash and recycling pickup. So that'll be a coordinated rollout and pickup and then return back into the building. If you can go to the next plan, I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes talking about grading and drainage. What's important to note here, I had mentioned the elevation on the site generally slopes from 18 way in the back sheet north down to a lower elevation along Phillips Street of roughly nine. So we are in a flood plain. The female flood hazard elevation is elevation 12.0. As such, the building finished floor, including the lobby, will be and has been designed at elevation 13, one foot above the female flood hazard elevation. And all of the roadways in and out and access points and sidewalks around the site will be in compliance with ADA with respect to the grading. So it's been designed accordingly with the appropriate slopes. Stormwater management is worth mentioning as well. We'll stay on the sheet for now. You can see some of those dashed long lines. Those are collection points for collection and conveyance stormwater. We have had quite a few conversations with Jersey City MUA representatives and have been in coordination as of even this morning. But we've been talking with them for some time about appropriate connection points. There will be some minor revisions to this to accommodate some of their comments. But essentially, when it comes to stormwater management, the the design of the actual management and the conveyance systems were in accordance with the DEP rules and JAC 7.8 and the City of Jersey City stormwater regulations. And those all both require that we address stormwater quantity, quality and recharge, those three elements. So with respect to stormwater quantity, we will be utilizing and have utilized the curve under curve method, which means that the proposed stormwater discharge quantities are below the existing quantities at each analysis point for the entire hydrograph for each of the two 10 and 100-year storm events. So that means that we are not required to provide any further detention in any way, just conveyance, because we've been able to design it accordingly. With respect to the second element, stormwater quantity, measures are not required because the proposed improvements on the site are actually decreasing the vehicular impervious area by about an acre. So a nice green improvement there. And the third element, which respects stormwater management is groundwater recharge. And those measures are also not required because the site is located in a PA one zone, planning area one. So. Let's go to the next plan, which is our last plan to discuss. And this is really just a general statement about utilities. I would say probably the most important one to mention is our continued coordination with JCMU on the sanitary. As part of the Edgeworks and overall development, there is a sanitary main that is being constructed along the back of the Edgeworks property or through the property, I should say. And we are connecting to that. And that is what has been part of the overall design for the campus. So JCMU, they are now reviewing an application related to that, and our dialogue is continuing. With respect to other utilities, typical gas, water, telecom, they will all be coming off of Phillips Street. And counsel, that would conclude my simple testimony.
Okay, and Mr. Savino, just real quick for the record, you you were you are in receipt of the review letters from dated June 26 from Li Shuang Wang and dated June 27 from Michael Manzella of the Jersey City Engineering Department. And and you have no objection to complying with those comments or addressing those comments further with with the engineering departments? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, I have nothing further for Mr. Mr. Savino.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Mr. Savino, I do have one question, and it's regarding the bike lanes. Where does the applicant's obligation to construct these begin and end? And is there a connection to the existing bike lanes?
Yeah, our understanding is that it's our fronting property. So we are showing them connecting and continuing beyond understanding that there will be some coordination that will be necessary as this gets built out. So the applicant's design does include the accommodation of those lanes with an understanding at some point on either side of the fronting property, it will be connected.
So we will, yeah, we will construct in front of our property. Is that that correct, Mr. Savino?
That is correct.
Yeah, but there's other discussions with the city on the the connections?
Yeah, we will continue discussions. That was one of the comments in the comment letter.
Okay, and I certainly don't want to see, you know, a bike lane just start and end. And now you have cyclists on the wrong side of the road that have to cross over. That's a recipe for disaster there. Okay, that was my only question. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Savino. We appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to move along with, at this time, I'd like to have my next. There's actually two two witnesses that will testify, but I want to have the the architect of record, who's the licensed New Jersey architect, Ishmael Leyva. If he can come up and be sworn and qualified along with Mr. Meda, who will be, he's our project design architect that is going to give the presentation. And then Runit Chaya is our landscape architect. And since Mr. Leyva will be signing or has signed both the landscaping and the architectural plans, I'd ask that he be sworn in and and qualified by the board.
All right. So you want to do all three right now? And then as you go through, they'll identify themselves and everything?
Exactly.
All right, great. So Ishmael and Runit, you guys want to just turn your videos on so I could square you in? I'm just waiting on Ishmael.
Okay. Let me start with Ishmael.
If we could, let's just stop that screen share for a second so we can.
I got them now.
Okay.
Do you need me to stop?
I I have I have multiple screens, but if you want to, Chris, that's fine.
Um, I I like to see a face if we could just for a second while we're qualifying and everything.
Okay.
All right, great. So I have Ishmael, Runit and Rustam. If you guys could raise your hand, your right hand. Do you swear that any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes, yes, I do.
And then Ishmael, Runit and Rustam, if you guys could just state and spell your names for me, please.
Ishmael Leyva, I S M A E L, Leyva, L E Y V A.
Thank you.
And I'm Reston Meta, R U S T A M, M E H T A.
Thank you.
I'm Runit Chaya, R U N I T C H H A Y A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, thank you, everybody. And if I understood counsel, Mr. Leyva, you were the architect of record, the licensed architect by the state of New Jersey. And the other two witnesses are just fact witnesses and they worked under your direction?
Mr. Leyva?
And sorry, your license is current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
Yes.
And have you presented to any other planning boards in the state? I don't believe we've qualified you ever, have we?
Um. I think a long time ago, yes.
Okay, but you've presented in front of boards previously?
No.
Okay. So just given that we're just going over Mr. Leyva's license and and we have two fact witnesses, as long as that license is current tonight, you would be qualified.
Okay, thank you. And for the record, Mr. Leyva is the principal of Ishmael Leyva Architects, that which you which are the architects of record on the plans.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
And respectively, myself, Rustam, and Runit are the principals of the of the design architecture firm and landscape architecture firm, respectively.
Yes. So, Mr. Maida, you're you're going to present as the project design architect here. And so have you been working on this project under the direction of Mr. Leyva?
Correct, yeah, from from day one.
Okay, and Mr. and I just. Mr. Mr. Chaya, you are you are a principal of green landscaping. Is that is that correct?
Yes, Green Collective Landscape Architecture, yes.
Okay, and and your you have been work, your your office has been working under the direction of Mr. Leyva as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, do you have, do you need any further information from Mr. Maida or Mr. Chaya?
No, no, just their testimony is fine at this point.
Okay, then we're gonna move forward with Mr. Maida to take you through the architecture.
Great, all right, well, thank you, everyone. The we left this intro slide here just to say that our team is is very familiar with the area. We recently presented to the board for sixty-six monitor, which is gonna be wrapping up this year. And in fact, we also worked as the interior designer on two seventy Johnson, from which I took this photo recently, which we're using just to introduce the site to anybody who may not be familiar. So that's the light rail station in the foreground, of course, Liberty Science Center on the left hand side, and the now vacant lot where the two buildings we're discussing tonight will go. And of course, Liberty State Park to the to the south.
And Mr. Maida, just before you, just for the benefit of the board, you've been working with Alpine Residential on on these projects as well, correct?
That that's right, yeah. So both sixty-six monitor, which you can see here, and two seventy Johnson are with Alpine Residential. So we're we're familiar with the neighborhood and and our client as well.
And Alpine Residential is is a developer in this instance, correct?
That's right.
Okay, go on.
So, you know, kind of moving from north to south, I think, pointing out some landmarks and things that also influence the design. The Liberty State Park Light Rail Station is a is a very short walk to the site. And so that that's kind of influenced the way we tried to prioritize pedestrian circulation on the site. The Liberty Science Center itself probably needs no introduction. And as you already mentioned, this is part of a larger campus. So while our design reacts to the master plan, we were not the master planners and and we are not involved with either Edgeworks or the high school, but we tried to lay out our buildings in a way that kind of enhances the whole campus and and therefore those buildings. And of course, reacts to the the views and the fantastic resource that is the Liberty State Park just to the south. This slide is the is the master plan. None of our firms developed this. This is what we were given when we started the project. So this is just kind of to set up a reminder of the campus for anyone who hasn't looked at it for a while. So starting on the right hand side is the the Edgeworks Center and a significant public plaza, which we reacted to in in how we laid out our building and our landscape. Then there is a boardwalk, which Lenny already mentioned, which we've created a number of connections to on that north side. And then there is the sidewalk from Edgeworks, which we've also tied into in a number of ways that that we will point out. And then probably the most, we think, impactful public aspect of this is what we're calling the Water Garden, which is in the middle, which is actually on top of the lobby for these two buildings. And we think we've done a nice job of almost hiding that lobby so that the public access is totally unencumbered by it. This three dimensional diagram is a kind of simplistic representation of the zoning envelope. So, you know, you can now see that the Edgeworks and the and the high school just shown in a simplistic way for reference. Our team did a number of things we think can prove upon what could have been, you know, a very long and monotonous, almost three hundred and forty foot long building that we're going to point out tonight. So this diagram kind of shows some of the things we did to try to make this have more of a human scale and to prioritize the public access. And that includes this kind of sloping surface here, which is the Water Garden, where public can literally walk on the roof of the lobby. We've also angled the building to kind of open up the views as a portal to Liberty State Park. We've set back the top story to reduce the visible bulk. Something that is a big difference on this project to the other ones that I've worked on in this neighborhood is that previously, we were allowed to put parking below the flood elevation. And the rules changed for this project, which is a challenge. So all parking has to be at or above the dry flood elevation. And we're going to point out what we've done to try to make that feel more kind of architecturally integrated. And part of that is a small overhang we have with residential floors overhanging that parking. And we'll point that out in renderings in a moment. This is a diagram that shows the uses of the different parts of the building. It's actually quite simple in that regard. It's all residential above the second parking floor, so ten stories of residential. We have located commercial space where it is in dialogue to the most public parts of the rest of the campus, that being the Edgeworks campus. And then you can't see in this diagram, but we'll show you in a floor plan to the north facing the high school and facing the entry to the Water Garden. This is a rendering looking from Liberty State Park North that shows you all the things we did to try to break down the scale of what we think could have been a very long and monotonous building. The first big move is what we call the zippers, which are kind of dividing the facade into three portions. Then, both because the views are fantastic and because I think it gives a scale to the building, we have a a large number of balconies. The majority of units have balconies. You can see here the kind of opened up view that kind of expands as it faces the the park and the the setback story on the front, I'm sorry, on the top. And then we'll talk in more detail using a separate rendering about what we've done to screen the view of the parking lot so that it doesn't look like parking. And then we'll zoom in and talk about the lobby in more detail as well. This is an elevation putting here mostly in case there were any questions about heights, but I'm not going to go into great detail about it. So I can refer back to this if if there are any questions, but I'm also going to use the like the colored renderings to explain. This diagram is important to kind of explain all the ways in which we've tied into the master plan. So starting at the right, you know, we've we've located a commercial section of the ground floor directly next to Edgeworks's Plaza. And we have stitched together the the sidewalks. And the the boardwalk is a very important pedestrian promenade, which we have connected directly to our building. So there's a secondary residence entry. There is an entry for the residents that goes straight to the gym. Then there is the the Water Garden, which is entirely public, which Renit will discuss in more detail. There's also an entrance to the leasing office, so anyone can can walk in. I should have mentioned that although this is called Scholar's Village, there's no particular requirement that, you know, to be a scholar of any sort, I think it's because it's adjacent to Edgeworks and and the high school, it has that name, but it's it's just a rental building that anyone can can walk into. Then, of course, there's the primary lobby entrance, and then there's a way to get through to Philip Street on the other side. And then, you know, the boardwalk keeps going to connect to the to the parking lot. Another thing that I'll introduce, but Renit will put a finer point on, is the fact that the entire site is landscaped and nearly all of it is accessible to the public. What's shaded in green is what's inside of our property line. But I want to be clear about the fact that there is no fence or demarcation where the green ends. So if you're standing on the boardwalk or you're standing on our property, you would just it would just look, you know, like open space. And there's many places in which, you know, you can cross over from the boardwalk to this property. And there's a variety of, you know, there's a a walking path, there's the whole Water Garden. So the the entire site is is landscaped. And this is a cross section through the Water Garden that explains how the the residential lobby, which, you know, must be up at the flood elevation, does not actually directly open onto that Water Garden, and that was by design. So it didn't feel like it was a residence amenity so much as a completely public amenity. There are fully wheelchair accessible ways to get both to the lobby and to the very top of the Water Garden. And Renit can explain that. You can kind of see the ramps here in the cross section. So that's about as much as I'll say about this and I'll let him go into more detail. This is the ground floor plan that shaded to explain how each space is used. So the the primary use of the ground floor is the you know, the residence primary entry. So from there, you go either left or right to the the East and West Tower. There's a variety of residence amenities on the ground floor. And then the thing I probably most like to point out here are in red, the two commercial spaces. I don't believe tenants have been secured yet. I think it's too still too early, so I can't say exactly what that will be. But the idea being that the these spaces face the Edgeworks Plaza and kind of are close to this very public portion where you enter the Water Garden. These numbers here are indicating camera angles where we're going to show you eye level renderings in a moment. The second floor, there's not too much to say about. It's all parking. And I think that I believe the exterior rendering will maybe explain how what we've done to provide ventilation to the parking lot without making it at all obvious that there's there is in fact parking there. Likewise, the the ten typical residential floors, I'm not going to go into too much detail about unless there's questions. There are a variety of unit sizes from studios, one, two, and three bedrooms. I think I described their size as as fairly normal. But the the details are all here. And if there are questions, we can we can go into that. On top of the the last residential floor is a amenity level, which Renit can describe all the everything we've done to to activate these spaces. So I'll just describe architecturally, there are very small enclosed portions as allowable by zoning. And those have a variety of functions, like gamers and kitchens and things like that. From that twenty-fourth floor, the view out is is really great. This is why we wanted to add so many balconies and and and, you know, also why we think the view from that Water Garden, although it's not quite this high, it is still significantly elevated when you're standing on the roof of the lobby. So that's kind of was a big driver in in what we were trying to do, both in terms of making great space for the residents and for the public walking through. This is an eye level view of the lobby. So again, we're kind of standing like just in Liberty State Park, looking north across Philip Street. You can just about see here, this is a ramp that takes you up, and then there's two staircases. So you know, this is the challenge we were facing to keep everything above the flood elevation. So we don't need any flood barriers, et cetera. Everything is is above the, you know, the one foot above the designed flood elevation. If you can just about see these kind of people on the roof, those would be people, public, accessing the Water Garden on the roof. There's a there's a railing there that's not totally visible in this in this rendering. But our idea is to allow you to come as close to kind of the front of that as is safe, so that you get all those views. This is a detailed view explaining how we handled the parking. So what you see here is a corrugated and perforated panel. So it lets the air flow through for parking, but we think it almost fully disguises the fact that there is parking there. So we spent a significant amount of time and and ultimately will spend a significant amount of money making that look what we think looks quite nice. And is is considered not just kind of letting cars be at the base. This zoomed in view also can show you the design we came up with for the facade. So not only do we do those big moves we mentioned, like the zipper and the balconies, but every single window is sort of set into like a three dimensional painted panel. So rather than be all glass, like some new skyscrapers, this building actually has significant amount less glass, which is a greener approach. And we think, you know, having those windows sort of breaks down the scale even more to a scale that we think is is friendlier. These are all the materials we submitted as part of our site plan application. We kept the design intentionally simple. So there are not, you know, fifteen different cladding materials, more or less the entire facade is that painted panel that I just pointed out. And besides that, I described the palette as very simple. So, you know, windows with black painted frames. There's some perforated metal where we need grills. And then there's that corrugated metal at the parking level that I described. And then I probably won't go into too much detail about the signage, et cetera, unless there's specific questions about that. So that's kind of concludes the the architectural design overview. And then I will let Renit, you can tell me how you'd like me to change the slides and I'll let you present the landscape.
Sure. Thanks, Russ. So I think the big, big move here is that this building has no back or front. At the pedestrian level, when you're walking through it, the experience is as if you're in the park. And the whole idea is to invite public to be part of this boardwalk and to be part of this this building, residential building, which which has this kind of transparent transparency as you're walking through it. So you don't feel as if that's private and this is public. And that that is the lot of effort has been gone in there to make make that move. And it's been deliberate just so that it feels like a public space. Next slide, Russ. I would also like to say, as Russ was saying, the planting of this entire development will be contagious to a larger campus palette, which was developed during the master plan. The Water Garden here is a public open space with fully accessible route to the overlook on the top of it. Next slide, please, Russ. There will be several seating areas and small gathering spaces to support community building. The plaza with step seating in the front touching the boardwalk and accommodated small community presentations or events. The overlap will provide expansive views of Liberty State Park and New York Harbor with built in scope for community to use. And so the the entire idea is to just treat this as a as a as a very public amenity for the for the neighborhood and 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 the close by residents. Next slide, please. At the twelfth story, which Russ was mentioning, and on the East Tower and the West Tower will include rooftop amenity spaces for building residents. Terraces will include native and adaptive plantings that capture stormwater and reduce heat island effect. Next slide, please, Russ. The East Terrace includes outdoor dining and gardening area. Next slide, please. As well as informal gardens and casual seedings. And on the West Terrace, the next slide, please. We are proposing a raised pool deck with outdoor dining to the right of it. And then the next slide. And then the rest of the terrace will have informal gardens and and casual seating. So that that is the overall arching idea behind that, behind the open space design for this.
Okay, before I before I go back to the chairman and the board members to see if they have any questions. Russ, if I could circle back with you, if you could break down the the unit mix and and the unit averages for the board, I think they'll they might want to know that.
Sure, yeah, I think that was on this slide. So twenty-two percent studio, forty-five percent one bedroom, twenty-six percent two bedrooms, seven percent three bedroom. And the average sizes are listed on this table here for each type.
And you could you just read those because it's.
Yeah, sure. Yes, studio.
Yeah, sure. Yes. Studio is an average 530 square feet. One bedroom is average 775 square feet. Two bedroom averages 1,083 square feet. Three bedroom averages 1,347 square feet.
Thank you.
Can you, I have a question. Can you give me the numbers? How many one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms you have?
Yes, that is listed here. So there's 111 studios, 223 one bedrooms, 132 bedrooms, 36 three bedrooms. The grand total is 500 units.
Any other questions for Russ or Rooni?
Just a couple. I appreciate the detailed presentation. It really doesn't leave me with many questions, but I believe there were 150 parking spaces, correct?
That's correct.
And there's also bike parking in the building. How many bike spaces are in the building?
Russ, do you have that number?
I am not sure that's in this presentation. Perhaps somebody else from the team can chime in with that. I wanted to say it was 250, but someone's going to need to please remind me of that.
Yeah, it is. It is 250. Actually, I'm looking at the zoning table.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And at this time, those are my only questions. Anybody else? Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Then at this time, I'd like to move forward with Gary Dean. He prepared a parking report with regard to the project. He is also historically prepared a report for the Edgework's project. So I'd like to hint, like for him to just address the parking and how, how it will work for, for the project.
Hi, Gary. Nice to see you.
Hi, Mike.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Certainly. Gary Dean, D E A N.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, good evening. We've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current though tonight?
They are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And you're qualified.
Thank you. A pleasure to be back.
Okay, Gary, if you could, I know you did a report here with the parking conditions for the project. If you could elaborate on that and, and how this, the 150 spaces would be adequate.
Certainly. And to be as succinct as possible, we have been involved with a number of different studies, not only within Jersey City, but also in neighboring communities principally Hoboken. Most recently, we've been involved in a few projects. I'll call it directly across Route 78 from the subject site or to the west in the Morris Canal District, where that redevelopment plan has often required no parking. We're familiar with the 295 J building that was done by Iron State. And what we've done is we've looked at how they're actually leasing their parking. That building had a slightly greater supply than we are considering here, or should I say ratio? And from leasing data that we've seen, anywhere near the light rail, which this property is, that ratio works out to be about 0.3 spaces per unit. And so with 500 units proposed at 0.3, that's 150 parking spaces. What makes this particular property unique? And, and it is a provision within the redevelopment standard, specifically the science and technology district provisions. Wherein to avoid having sites overparked with excess construction that isn't needed. Shared parking is recommended. And what this particular project allows us to capitalize on is the available parking that is vacated at the end of the day by Edgework's, as well as the high school. And then featured just to the left of the exhibit that you see before you or to the south on Philip Street is also a rather substantial overflow parking area. That's 227 parking spaces. So we recognize that the redevelopment plan has certain minimum parking standards, which are point five. And that's for one bedroom units and then higher for, for a greater number. We believe, given the proximity to the light rail, the, the cutouts, as you've heard from Mr. Savino, that are done to facilitate loading, but also ride sharing services. And with the amount of bicycle parking that is provided from our studies and again, looking at the analogous developments in the immediate vicinity that we have provided an appropriate parking supply that will benefit and be able to be used by all of the different site components. But particularly, you know, toward the evening hours when the other components have closed, that overflow parking will be available. I'm pleased to note that your transportation division and traffic engineering found, and I'll say generally concurred, I won't speak for them, but found that this proposal is part of best management practices. In other words, if you build more parking, conceivably it could generate more traffic. And so the very nature of this tends to put a cap on traffic and encourages through the alternative ride sharing, scooters, bikes, and obviously the light rail to minimize the dependence on automobiles for regular commuting and transportation. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm feeling comfortable that at least the divisions of, of traffic and transportation have concurred with our findings. But we did want to put these proofs on the record in support of the relief for the reduced parking supply.
Mr. Dean, real quick, for the benefit of the board, we're, we're looking at slide number 37 on the screen right now. If maybe Russ, you could point out the overflow parking lot, how, how immediately adjacent it is to the project as well.
I believe you're referring to this one here. Is that correct?
That's correct, as well as the small pocket parking that, pocket, thank you, that shared by Edgework's and the high school. So those are available for after evening hours, you know, as residents may have guests or visitors.
And I, I want to know, where is the light rail around here? Can you show it on the?
I, I can show you on a, maybe one of the other experts has an exhibit. I don't want to introduce
I do have a plan I can, I can show you. So
Perfect. Thank you.
The, the red box is, is our site. And this would be the Liberty State Park Light Rail Station there.
And it is a very short walk up Jersey City Boulevard. There are full sidewalks along Jersey City Boulevard as there are along the connector road that then travels under Route 78 and leads directly to the station. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome.
I, I do have a, a quick question. But I, I do agree with your analysis in my time on this board. You know, I have seen parking reports from existing buildings, existing garages in the area. A third of a space is very accurate. And I, I do believe that, you know, a shared parking system is the way to go in the future for a lot of projects. But my question does hinge on the economics of it. So obviously, if, if a tenant wants to park inside the building, they'll be charged for that spot, correct?
I, I can't answer that question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
One of our experts can.
The, the reason I ask that is I would assume that the shared parking, there's not going to be a charge for that. And, and you know, we can have that confirmed at any time. But you know, since the shared parking is so close, what's the incentive for tenants to park inside the building versus, you know, just taking those shared spots and using them for their private car storage, which is really reserved for inside the building. Those shared spaces are supposed to turn over multiple times a day. So I just want to make sure that that does happen and that there's some kind of mechanism to have that happen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can bring up a representative of ownership to, to address that. They, they may be able to address it the best.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Dean? I don't want to keep him here all night if he doesn't have to be.
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
That's a pleasure. Have a good evening.
That would be my only question. Okay. I don't know if you want to take care of that now later. It's up to you. It's your presentation.
Let me take care of it now. If Cameron could promote Bill Rosato.
Okay, promoting Bill. Okay, actually there is no Bill in the audience.
William Rosato, perhaps?
William, William Rosato.
Will, okay.
And is there any way we can stop the screen share?
Yes.
While we're I'm sorry, I'm, I'm
No problem.
Old school. I like to see someone's faces, even if it's on a computer screen.
Okay, Bill has joined the panelists.
Bill, you're muted. There we go. Hello.
Hi, Bill. I just want to swear in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand.
Yeah, sure.
Do you swear any testimony you get tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
William, W I L L I A N, Rosato, R O S A T O.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosato, good evening. Obviously, we're not qualifying you as an expert. You're representative of the applicant. Do you, do you understand the question that I posed earlier? I don't know if you were
I was listening, yes. So I, I think I do. So I'm, I'm a managing partner of Alpine Residential. We're the, we're the developer. Regarding the shared parking, we're going to charge everyone for parking. The, the, the overflow parking in our ground lease, it, it's stipulated in the ground lease. So, so it's in agreement with Liberty Science Center that should we require overflow parking, we will rent spaces from the science center and, and then charge our tenants. So there, there's no circumstance where someone will elect not to pay for parking, but then bring a car and park anyway. And, and you know, that would be up, up our responsibility to monitor that and police that. But that's, that's our intent in, in the, what we think is the unlikely chance that we're going to need overflow based on what we're providing.
Understood. And I, I do agree with the numbers. They, they seem in line with what we've seen across the city. So the, the spots internally, are they assigned to it, to units as they're paid for, or is it just a flexible parking situation where it's first come, first served? And then the overflow goes to the shared parking?
Yeah, you know, I, I think a building like this, we'll run it where, where we all assign the spaces, we'll number them, assign them to, to the, who's ever renting them. And so in that case, once we, once we understand that we need to exercise the overflow option, then again, we'll, we'll assign those spaces to those tenants that are, that are coming in at that point. But, but those spaces will be part of the overflow lot likely, and it's that phase two parking structure that was to the west of the building.
Okay, understood. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comment. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Rosato while we have him? Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So then at this time, I'd like to move forward with Mr. Height to address the requested variances.
Before we call up Mr. Height, Mike, do you think this is a good time to take a break?
Um, yeah, I would just say either before or after Charles works for me. I'm getting a little tired though, sure.
Yeah, I, I think I'd rather do the, the break before Mr. Height, so we can just roll from his testimony right into public comment.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yeah, so let's, uh, let's take 10, everybody. It's 7:16. We'll be back at 7:26. All right, if we could, let's come to order again, everybody. Okay, so counsel, we were up to Mr. Height.
Yes. Charles, you here?
I am here.
Okay. All right, Charles, I swear in if you could raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you get tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, can you state your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. Always a pleasure. We've qualified you numerous times. Your license is current tonight as a planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is, Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Okay, and Charles, before you start testifying, I believe you want, you'd like Russ to put up some slides from the deck for.
Yeah, these will just help hone in on some of the variances from a visual standpoint, so.
If you tell me which slides you would like.
I believe there are three slides at the end of the set.
Thirty-eight. Yes. Starting here.
Yeah, we can start there. That looks, that looks good. We are requesting four deviations from the Liberty Harbor redevelopment plan. And just for the board's identification, this property is located in the Science and Technology District, and this application does really complete that holistic view of this overall campus, the SciTech, SciTech center. And the overall property is about 94,000 square feet. We are proposing a multi-use building with approximately 12 stories. The four deviations that we're requesting, just to run through them, one being related to maximum building coverage, another being related to maximum building height, I'll reference this exhibit in a moment. We did reference the parking requirement, so we are requesting a deviation for a minimum number of parking spaces. And then the fourth is respect to signs where given the multiple uses, we're requesting relief for the maximum number of signage. When we looked at the maximum building height, this redevelopment plan, the specific district regulates building height based on a number of specific feet. That's 120 feet. What's being proposed at 129.8 feet exceeds that threshold. So we are requesting a bulk deviation for the additional 9.8 feet. The plan does not regulate buildings based on stories, so there is no intent to have 11 versus 12. But what we did want to cover from the architect's presentation is that the overall scale and design of this 12-story building is still appropriate. So we do have a base of the building that you can see in on the lower section. And then we do have 11 floors above that, of the floors above that with the balconies. And then as you get up to the 12-story, you can see that it's set back, which is actually a requirement in the redevelopment plan where any 12-story is set back approximately six feet. So we do comply with that. So from an overall floor-to-ceiling standpoint, we still comply with the minimum residential standards. Some of the upper floors are actually taller to provide for a little bit more space on those upper floors. But in all, the overall composition of the building is appropriate with the design and the architecture that's being proposed with this elevation. We can move on to the next slide. I think that will cover. Okay, so just backtracking before we get to the slide, this is about the signage, but Ross, maybe it might be easier to stop sharing and then we'll recap because I want to talk about the building coverage. Okay. Thank you. With respect to the building coverage, 50% is permitted in the Science and Technology District. We are proposing 51.1%. So this is an increase or a deviation request of 1.1%. On this size property, as mentioned, 94,000 square feet, it amounts to 1,041 square feet of a deviation. That's approximately the size, or really is attributable to that ground-level lobby. That lobby is critical to the overall function of the building. It provides for the connection and the lobby for both buildings. It also provides for a really great opportunity, as we saw earlier, to provide for that rooftop lookout, the resiliency features and the landscaping that extend from the ground level at grade up to the roof of the lobby, which is a public amenity. A few other aspects that I wanted to reiterate from the overall landscaping plans. This has been, this project is sensitive to the context of the Liberty State Park with respect to the design of the landscaping. We have riparian riparian forested and upland area landscaping species in terms of the plantings and the overall composition of the design. So that's being designed with a little bit of sustainability and sensitivity to the environment. I should also mention that the overall impervious surface is below the maximum of 80%. It's at 74.7%. So again, we're within reason, given that we have a 1.1% increase in building coverage, greater than what's permitted. We did hear in detail, and I won't go into too much detail about the parking, but I did just want to reiterate, based on our calculations of the overall requirements for the residential, 389 spaces are required where we are proposing 150. We do think that this is justified. We had consulted with Mr. Dean on the ratio and the appropriate balance. And again, to reiterate from a planning standpoint, we are in proximity to Liberty State Park Light Rail, which is just north and within walking distance. We have the requisite number of bicycle spaces. And even beyond that, we are implementing the connection to the Jersey City Bicycle Master Plan dedicated the protected bicycle lane along Philip Street. So we've gone through a great length of coordination to ensure that that's being implemented and coordinated with this overall project. So if we can return to the slides for the signage, thank you. So with respect to the signage, the redevelopment plan is a bit dated in terms of the overall concept that we're proposing with with Scholar's Village and the overall SciTech campus. It only permits two signs per building. So again, here we have an intricate building where we have two essentially ground-floor areas connected with a lobby. We also have a multi-use building, so we have ground floor commercial, which is part of the vision of the overall area as well as residential and other entrances. We are proposing a total of eight signs. They mostly occur at the ground floor. Here are two examples. We have the commercial signage shown as cafe shop. There are other types of commercial uses, but this is just shown as a cafe shop. As one sign, we also have parking on the left to indicate the parking entrance. We also have signage for residential lobbies and entrances surrounding the building as well. So in total, we are proposing eight signs where two are permitted. With respect to special reasons that would advance the requested deviations, I would call out purpose A to provide for one moment. To promote the general welfare, consistent with purpose A. The appropriate proposed mixed-use building is the third component of the overall SciTech city. It's been a work in progress, and we're proud to see that it is consistent and provides that residential component and commercial component to the overall campus. We are also furthering purpose E to promote an appropriate population density within the city. Again, the redevelopment plan does indicate this to be a Science and Technology District, but does allow for the proposed uses. And the overall density being proposed here will help sustain the edgeworks component as well as provide for an appropriate location for new residents within the city. And lastly, I just refer to purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment. As you can see from this photo that we have up here, we did reference it for the signage, but it also stands to provide for that really healthy composition of landscaping, architectural design, mix of uses. And the overall, as someone I think in the earlier part of the presentation said, it has facades that respect all sides of the building. There's not one front and sides and rear, but all the sides of this building are activated and have some interest. So those are the positive criteria as I see it. With respect to the negative criteria, again, with respect to the building coverage, we're meeting all the state standards with respect to stormwater. We're providing sufficient landscaping and appropriate landscaping to make up for the increase in overall coverage. And that lobby space is a critical component, which is only one story at grade. With respect to the building height, we are really in an interesting location. We don't have any unintended neighbors. We have the proposed county college, a county high school, as well as edgeworks, which are all part of the overall campus. There are no immediately adjacent residential neighborhoods that would be impacting with the additional height in terms of light and air. So it is an appropriate location for the added height with very little detriment. Lastly, I just want to jump to a little bit of the redevelopment plan. I don't believe there's any substantial impairment with the requested deviations. First and foremost, the proposed application will provide for new residential development and ancillary commercial development. Again, we are proposing commercial up the ground floor with a significant residential development in an appropriate location. And lastly, it's a multi-use proposed structure in the Science and Technology District. I mentioned that throughout the presentation, but that's another goal and objective of the redevelopment plan, which we are fostering. So that completes my direct testimony. I do think this application's consistent with the redevelopment plan and the master plan, and the deviations are justified.
All right, thanks, Mr. Height. Yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Height. I always appreciate his detailed testimony. Anybody else? Any other questions for Mr. Height?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Height. We appreciate your time.
Good to see everyone tonight.
You too. All right, counsel, anything else?
No, that completes our presentation.
Okay. Obviously, I'll offer you time to do a closing statement before any board deliberations that happen. So with that said, if we could, let's open it up for public comment at this time. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Promoted Evelyn Ibarra. Evelyn Ibarra has joined the panelists.
Evelyn, if you're there, you can unmute and turn your video on.
Oh, sorry about that.
Don't worry. Are you able to turn your video on?
Uh, no, not at this time. My camera's not working. I apologize.
All right, sure, Chairman. If you're all right with that, I can just swear in.
Absolutely, that's fine.
All right, thanks. So Ms. Ibarra, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please, and give us your home address?
Sure, Evelyn Ibarra, E V E L Y N, I B A R R A. And I am a homeowner at 300 Communipaw Avenue.
Thank you.
Ms. Ibarra, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Okay, great. I just have a couple of questions. You know, I've been a longstanding resident of the neighborhood and I'm very active in the community. You know, I have a couple of concerns and questions. I'm very active in the community. Um, you know, I have a couple of concerns and questions. Um, you know, I'm on a lot of these meetings and it seems like the normal overflow of parking. Um, you know, including the other building you guys are working on, the two seventy Johnson Avenue um with ten parking spaces and twenty-six stories. Um, I'm just, you know, the light rail is my understanding that it's supposed to be a commuter lot. Um, and you know, besides just these two buildings, it seems like every building that's coming up, um. You know, the go-to is the light rail, but I just wondered, do you guys um ask? Community members, when you do these surveys or studies, because parking is a mess. I have worked. At two of the buildings over here on Maple Street. Um, you know, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, the parking, the concerns. Um, so I just want to know more about how, you know, the default is the light rail for um for all the development going on at the moment.
All right. Thank you, Miss Ibera. We'll get that answered for you. But um. Counsel, I don't want to steal your thunder here. I think. Um, we're talking about a different lot, correct? If your overflow?
That's correct. Yeah, they we're not defaulting to the light rail lot. We would be defaulting to the onsite uh parking overflow lot.
Okay, thank you.
Promoted Kevin.
And Kevin, you can unmute and turn your video on. Kevin, are you there?
Okay, I promoted Chris Gadsden while we wait for Kevin.
Okay, yeah, we'll try and get Kevin off. Uh, I do want to have everybody heard. That's uh the main concern. Hi, Chris. I can swear in if you'll raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Uh, yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Uh, Chris Gaston, uh four seventeen uh Union Street.
Chris, good evening. Always a pleasure, sir. Um, and we have three minutes for you.
Uh, good evening, uh Chris. Yeah, um, I just, I just have a lot of questions. I guess um primarily because, you know, I I know the history of this. Particular project side tech city, the whole scope both or uh three phases. Um, I have a a little bit of concern because uh. And I know, Chris, you're going to say that this is not uh redevelopment uh meeting, but. Uh, it's important because when I was on city council, I was asking a lot of questions about. The scope of the project. Uh, this is on land that's donated. Um, given to. Uh Paul Hoffman and Liberty Science and uh for to for the creation of Side Tech City. Uh, it's supposed to be a shared venture with the city being its partners. Um. It was supposed to have been um, you know, like an agreement. I had asked the mayor at that time because I was concerned about. Um, you know, uh, the the buildings that are are going to take place. You know, because at that time, what what was proposed uh from Paul Hoffman was a science incubator, a school. Uh, places for people uh to live and work, but they were supposed to be within the confines of uh side tech city. Now it seems as though um it has shifted with the uh. There's going to be uh market rate housing being built on land that was dedicated. For a nonprofit to conduct the business of creating the science incubator. So. Uh, you know, one of the things I want to know is who's. Who's who who's responsible for this project? Is it Paul Hoffman or is it um the developer? Uh Alpine that's speaking right now because if it's for a profit, for-profit entity. Uh, and there's money being raised and produced and things of that nature. Um, I believe that that's out of the scope of of what was originally uh planned and proposed. Uh, back in two thousand and seventeen. And then being that it's being built in a redevelopment zone and folks are asking for um, I guess, variances. Nowhere in their original plans did it call for um twelve-story uh building. Um. But these changes are happening right now, twelve-story to five hundred units. I have a problem with city donated land. With no uh affordability even being mentioned uh in it, but it seems as though right now you have five hu- five. Hundred units that's going to be sold at market rate, probably advertised as lovely housing. Um, I, you know, I have a problem with that. So is this uh planning? Uh, going to take into consideration their original uh purpose for side tech city. And is i- i- is that part of the, I guess, agreement or like it it's going to be allowed? Because I don't, that's, well, for me, that's not what was originally proposed when um side tech city and Paul Hoffman. Um, first came up with this, um, you know, with this project, you know.
Chris, uh, um, I don't want to cut you off. Your three minutes were up. Um.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. You know me too well. You know what I'm gonna say tonight. Um. You know, obviously, the planning board only has jurisdiction on the application in front of us. Hmm, um. So that's, you know, that's what we focus on legally. That's our purview. But um, counsel, do you want to address anything?
Well, I could, I can answer, I mean, who's who's responsible for the development? Um, it will be the Alpine Development Entity. Um, because through their land lease, they are responsible for developing this. It's it's always been um the intent to. To have a residential um component here uh through the land lease that that um. Generates revenue to help site tech city um develop the edgeworks building and and other. Uh, uh life uh science uh um activities um connected to the edgeworks building. So it's all tied together. Um, there was never, well, it's the the residential component is is provided so that. There is now a place for people who work at edgeworks and um and and hopefully get to, you know, entrepreneurs over there. And people going to the school was never constrained to just those people. It's it is, it is, you know, open to everybody who who wants to uh. Develop it. Um, and it was always the intent that that site tech. Yeah, uh, city LLC as the uh redeveloper would bring in a development. Um, team or partner to develop the residential portion. Um, and again, that's, they all work together so that this this helps to generate revenue to to create the other. Components of of the site tech campus.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Promoted Samuel Conway.
Hey, Samuel, I'll swear in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Samuel Conway, S A M U E L C O N A W A Y ninety-two Cherry Street.
Thank you. Brother Conway, good evening. Uh, I assume you're uh. One of Tommy Hurley's guys, it looks like from your shirt.
Yes, I am. I just wanted to go on record and uh recognize that I do support this project. I'm in favor of this project. Um, for a couple of reasons. One, the developer decided to go with responsible bidding language. So they're gonna be a hundred percent union contractors there. So that's definitely a plod to, you know, the taxpaying uh. Middle-class citizen, you know, me being a union carpenter. I don't want to sound biased, but. I am a resident of the city. I love, you know, contributing to my city's beauty and everything about it. So. I'm definitely in favor of this product, this project.
All right. Thank you, Brother Conway. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Promoted Randy Condi.
Hey, Randy, I'll just swear in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please, and give us your home address?
Randy Condi, R N D Y C O N D I ninety-eight Beach Street, Jersey City, New Jersey.
Thank you. Brother Condi, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Um, hi, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Randy. I'm a Jersey City lifelong resident and I'm a proud member of the carpenters' union. Um, I'm a carpenter. I also work in the city. I'm very excited about a lot of the new construction. I grew up here, so I see how the city is developing. Right before my eyes. I raised two kids here as a single dad. Um. And this project I'm very excited about because it opens up a lot of jobs for the union trades, especially carpenters. Um. And um, you know, I feel I feel comfortable that uh. That they're building it, you know, to code and with the professionalism of the union trades. So I'm very comfortable with that. So of course, I promote that and um. I support that. So I just wanted to come and show my support for that tonight for my union, for the for the middle class. Um, for Jersey City residents and the development of Jersey City. And I, I have a great faith that um. The panel will will do the right thing to to address all of those issues that were said here tonight about parking and and a lot of those things. To get, to be fair for everyone. Not that everyone will be happy, but I'm really excited about uh an- another new project. That the union trades get to be part of. And that this city will get to be more prosperous. So so um, thank you for letting me uh speak here tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
Promoted Tom Hurley. Oh, uh, they've declined. Uh, let's see if they want to try. Okay, promoted Tom Hurley.
Hi, Tom. I'll just swear in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Thomas Hurley. I'm actually not a Jersey City resident anymore, but my address is two oh six Canterbury Avenue in North Arlington.
Thank you. Brother Hurley, before uh you go on, I do have to say for the record, um. I I do know Brother Hurley, our paths cross in union business uh from time to time. Uh, I should put on the record, we have not discussed this project. We have not discussed anything about. His appearance tonight. And uh with that said, if you could just confirm that.
I confirm that. Absolutely not.
Thank you, brother. It's good to see you. And uh we have three minutes for you.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, after hearing uh the plan. Um, and everything that was uh specked out and and all, all the slides that were shown tonight. Um, not being biased, I'm not saying, oh, because it's a union project. This this project. Is it is a marquee landmark project for that area. Uh, what it what it brings in addition to the other two components, a side tech and and edgeworks. Um, it fits. Uh, the 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 area for forever has been abandoned land. It wasn't utilized properly. And and I I would hope that the uh panel and the commissioners would uh consider approving it. Of course, as a representative of the union and the president of local union two fifty-three. Um, I'm excited that Alpine is going to use the young men and women and uh. I should say all men and women of Jersey City and Hudson County to build this project. So I just wanted to state my excitement and my support for the project. And I would hope that you uh men and women would consider it. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Brother Hurley. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Promoted Evelyn.
Uh. We actually did hear from Miss Ibera already, uh unless there's somebody else under that name that's speaking.
Okay, all right. Well, I will promote Kevin again.
Oh, I'm I'm here. I was I was cut off before. I don't know.
Uh, Miss Ibera, we only allow public comment once per.
Oh, I, okay, I just got put back into this.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin has been promoted again.
Uh, can you guys hear me?
I can hear and see you, Kevin. I'll just swear in if you could raise your hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Kevin Fernandez, K E V I N F E R N A N D Z. Address is seventy-four Wallace Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, zero seven three zero six.
Thank you. Mister Fernandez, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Good evening. Just a quick question. Has there been any consideration as to a stormwater detention system? Um, I know he mentioned that with the lock coverage and the trees and everything that there is, but you know, a lot of uh. This being a a science area and something that we're trying to promote, I just think there there should be better architecture and planning for the future. So um, I would look for a project like this near the water and things like that to promote something like that. Or to have something like that and that we should recommend it going forward. So we don't have the same issues that we have at West Side and Sip. And other places like Newark Avenue. Um, and uh, I forgot. Uh, second and third street where we have some flooding. And a stormwater detention system will really help with that. And this size building, taking up that size of lock coverage would ru- really work well.
All right. Thank you, Mister Fernandez. We appreciate it. Uh, counsel, do you want to address that?
Yeah, I think if Mister Savino um could address that, I um, he'd be the the best person.
Yes, Kevin. So uh, we have been coordinating quite a bit with the Jersey City Municipal Utility Authority folks. Um, typically detention is really not a good thing to do right at the last discharge point from a drainage area to. Uh, stream. And in this case, we are pretty close, if not very close to the end. Um, before it discharges through a pretty large culvert. So we have been coordinating with them. Um, and the design is in accordance with the Jersey City engineering standards as well as the N J D P standards. Um, so that the increase in impervious or green that we're creating is actually going to reduce the stormwater. Uh, when it comes to quantity, there'll be some infiltration, but uh just the fact that we're we're adding so much green. Uh, the design does have what we call, and I I described this before, is a curve-under curve. Uh, approach, which is acceptable uh to the D E P and the city, which means that in the proposed condition. Will always stay under the existing peaks. Um, and I understand that there are flooding in cer- certain areas. Um, and in this case. Uh, the extensive coordination that we've been doing with the Jersey City Municipal Utility Authorities, um. And they have taken that into consideration and we have been coordinating to to tie in where we should and to provide uh the appropriate design. So. That was uh how the applicant has met the standards essentially.
Thank you, Mister Savino.
All right. Thanks, Mister Savino. We appreciate it.
Rafael Torres has joined the panelists.
Oh, could you hear me?
We can hear you. Are you able to turn your video on?
Uh, sure.
Thank you. All right, great. I see you. I hear. I just want to swear in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure, it's Rafael, R A F A E L Torres, T O double R E S. And I'm at eighty-five Charles Street in Jersey City.
Thank you. Mister Torres, good evening. We have three minutes for you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, just a few things. First of all, um. I I'm retired Jersey City firefighter. I I was a retired fire official and inspector. Um, my concerns also are related to me being a a trustee for Friends of Liberty State Park. But I am not representing them. Today I am representing myself. Um, I I'm I'm concerned on one, the bike lanes. Um, we're working with the D E P uh in reference to the Liberty State Park's interior. And one of the things that we're working on now is the local mammals. And uh when they start the remediation process. Um, that the mammals flow go in and around uh. Greenville area or away from Lafayette. So when they do a bike lane, uh the partitions or the bike lane. Uh, dividers should have holes on the bottom. So I just wanted to see if maybe how I could talk to someone or send a letter to someone in reference to that. The other one is that bike, the sidewalks that will run accordingly. Across going north and and going towards um Audra Zap Drive. Uh, that stop all of a sudden. So if you could take care of the sidewalks first, that would be so beautiful for the area. And and the last thing I wanted to talk about is. There's nothing I could read about the meetings, the. There's nothing I could read about the meetings, the two meetings that were done in the community with the councilwoman. Uh, Ridley and, and, um, I forgot the other council meeting that they had. Um, and I'm, I'm just concerned, what did they say? If you could tell me, uh, are, are they concerned about the affordability of the housing? Uh, in reference to, uh, uh, the market rate building, uh, and, 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 and property. This seems to be away from the two thousand seventeen, which we were involved with and, and, uh, we were very, very. Uh, supportive of this project going forward because it just fits with Liberty State Park. And, and we were concerned that, um, if the, if that property has affordable housing. Uh, that wasn't talked about at that time, it was talking about a, a, a hotel being there, I believe. The high school was a grammar school, the high school, so a lot of things changed. I, I'm just wondering what are the politicians involved? Are they concerned about the affordable housing? And I, I really do like the project, I love everything Paul Hoffman does there, uh, the science. Hub is great for the area, I'm looking forward to seeing that, but we are concerned that it's not in. In direct, uh, stability with the community. And, and, and we're just, I'm concerned, you know, is there anything I could get, uh, to see what happened at those meetings? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Torres, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I could address, uh, some of those comments, um. You know, with regard to the bike lanes, I mean, we, we as the developer, or my client as a developer, would be working with Jersey City Traffic and Engineering Department. So my assumption is that they would be working with, you know, the DOT and, and, and the Liberty State, you know, park, uh, in the event that they're all. You know, have, have their ideas as to the best plan, so that's not our decision, e- essentially. So we would be directed by, by them as to, to how to build those out. Um, you know, as far as sidewalks, there will be sidewalks in front of our project. Um, I, I don't know if he's, uh, referring to sidewalks beyond the Liberty State Science Center. That, that would not be part of this project, but there will be new sidewalks along Philip Street, um, as, as part of this project. Uh, lastly, with regard to the meetings, um. Uh, I, you know, I, I don't know. I know that there wa- there was dissemination by Councilwoman Gil, uh, Ridley's office, uh, as to the, her meeting. And then June Jones, um, uh, disseminated, uh. Flyers and, and emails, I guess, about her meeting, and I, I think she recorded, uh, her meeting, so she may be able to provide. Uh, Mr. Torres, a, a copy of that. Uh, I mean, as far as the affordability, again, it was never part of the program, um. And, um, you know, as, as to the units, um, and it's not part of it now, but. Yeah, I don't want to speak for anyone, I see, you know, Councilman Gilmore is, is, has his hand up next, I, I know he has some concerns about it. But it was never, um, you know, proposed as part of the, the overall development.
All right, thank you, council, we appreciate it.
Uh, sure, I just want to put that, um, Mr. Torres should reach out to the city planning office regarding some of his concerns about. Uh, the bike lane design, uh, so if he can reach out, uh, and a planner should be able to take his call. Uh, it, our number is two zero one five four seven five zero one zero. And two zero one five four seven five zero one zero, thanks.
All right, thanks, Matt.
Okay, promoted Pat Kay.
Pat, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Great, are you able to turn your video on? Great, I see you, I hear you, you got your hand up already, I appreciate it, do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My, my name is Patrick Kelleher. I live at twen- I don't live in Jersey City, I'm Bergen County resident, but I do a lot of work in Jersey City. I live at twenty-two Nickabacher Road in Devers, New Jersey. I am the, uh, Hudson County Building Trades, I represent all fifteen trades in Hudson County, also the business agent. And I like to, I like to comment on this, on this project here. And I know a lot of people said two thousand and seventeen, a long time coming. Uh, I really, of, uh, of, of Mr. Rosado and the Alpine Group, what a great, what a great project it will be. And the opportunity for Hudson County residents and Jersey City residents. And the openness of the project and the feel of it, stuff like that is a great thing. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board, I thank you for your time and you have a good night.
Brother Kelleher, you too, and, uh, before we promote, uh, Pat, uh, I do have to say for the record, as well as, uh, Brother Hurley before. Um, my path does cross with Mr. Kelleher often, um. Just like Mr. Hurley before, uh, we haven't discussed this project, we've had no, uh, back and forth, uh, at all.
No, Mr. Chairman, we haven't.
Okay, thank you, Brother Kelleher, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
What do we need, Councilman Gilmore?
Good evening, Councilman, how are you?
Hey, how you doing, good evening, everyone?
I'll just swear in real quick. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman, good evening, always a pleasure, um, we usually do have a three minute time limit, but we, uh, do waive that for, uh. Our council people and, uh, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, um, I just have a few questions, um, logistically, um, so with the, with the variances. That they're seeking, um, do we know? Like how many additional units they will be getting versus what's permitted at the, at the site in a current, um, zoning?
I, I can answer that. Uh, um, sorry, why don't we wait for you?
Well, yeah, why don't we get, uh, why don't we get a list of all your questions, we'll obviously get them all answered for you tonight.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's, um, I mean, of course, uh, my primary concern is affordability. Um, but I understand, you know, the jurisdiction of this board does not really focus in, in or address the affordability. Component, um, but I do just want the record to reflect that, you know, I think that it's, uh. Um, well, I do think it's a good idea that we're using union members, um, to build this establishment. I'm not necessarily against the, um, the development in totality, um. However, it is very problematic for me to see that land that was once the cities that were deeded over for a nominal fee. Is subsequently being developed at a hundred percent affordability, is, it is just mind boggling. The president that, the presidents that we set here in Jersey City with respect to not really. Um, addressing a real elephant in the room, i.e. the affordability. Um, but again, I know this board does not really, it's not within their jurisdiction, but I did just want the record to reflect that. Um, but my, again, my primary concern is, uh, the number of units that they're requesting. Versus what is that's permitted in the current zoning. I want to know the, the differential, um, in that, and if it is a differential, what if any benefits? The city will be receiving to obliged to allow these, um, variances.
All right, thank you, Councilman, we appreciate your time and, uh, we'll get that answered.
Yeah, I, I can address that, um, I mean, in, the short answer is that there, there are no additional units. Um, that would be provided as a result of the requested variances and the reason for that is. This redevelopment plan does not have any density standard, so there's no maximum number of units. So, uh, you know, as testified earlier, we have a, a nice unit mix of one studios, ones, twos, and threes. And they're, they're pretty good sizes as far as, you know, square footages. So if, you know, you could reconfigure them hypothetically to, to have smaller units and more units. Um, but the proposal now is for the five hundred units at, at these, at these unit mixes and, and square footages. So you're, you're not really gain, you're not gaining anything and, and I, I'd also note that, um. You know, this part of this project, the, the big component is, is that, that water garden in the middle, right? So that, that's actually developable area that is, that is, um, not being used as part of the project. It makes the project a, a whole lot better, um, and we're not gonna, you know, deny that. But, you know, there's no F A R, um, you know, calculation here that would prevent you from filling that in. Under this, the, the, uh, under the zoning as it reads now. So, you know, my, my position is that, that it does not increase the number of units, uh, within the project.
All right, thank you, council. Um, we also have among us the Office of Councilman Gilmore.
Yeah, um, Erica Walker. I work as an A G for staff to Councilman Gilmore.
Great, I just want to swear in before you speak. Do you swear any testimony you get tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, can you, I guess, state and spell your name again and give us your home address?
Sure, Erica Walker, E R I C A W A L K E R, home address is five seventy-eight Ocean Avenue.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker, good evening, um. We already had testimony from Councilman Gilmore, uh, obviously you're representing his office as well.
I'm speaking as myself, though.
Okay, we, we would have a three minute time limit for you, though. Okay, thank you.
So, um, so I do have several questions, but because the last person got cut off after, after asking one question. Evelyn, I believe, had more to say, but, um, you, you stopped her time after she asked the one question so that you could answer it. If you could wait to answer my questions after I'm finished, after my three minutes, so I don't get my time cut off.
Absolutely, yeah, let's just get your questions listed and, uh, we'll make sure we answer all of them.
Thank you, how much is it going to cost, um, each, for each unit? Wha- what, what is the cost for each unit, one bedroom, two bedroom, um, et cetera? Why is it called Scholars Village if it's not for scholars? Because I feel like that's false advertising, I feel like this, the city of Jersey City donated this land. Under the guise that this would be housing for students, or at least for teachers, or at least for scholars. That are going to be learning and working at SciTech City. Um, hearing that it's open for everyone or anyone, um, is disappointing. Because luxury apartments aren't available for everyone if there's no affordability involved. So, um, I would ask that the developers please stop using the term everyone, because everyone cannot afford market rate apartments. So it's not open to everyone to live in. Um, I would ask that it not be called Scholars Village, why is it called Scholars Village? Again, that's false advertisement. Um, well, we also don't have anything that says the majority of seats in the school will go to children, so this is our only, uh, this is our only. Um, opportunity to make sure that the city gets, city residents get something. And forgive me, but a, a simple green space is, is not enough of a give back for donated land. And two million dollars a year being donated to SciTech City for the next thirty years. Um, the public should have access to the luxury amenities on the rooftop. The public give back is a tease as you flaunt this building that only people who make six figures will be able to afford. Um, we can't depend on entities like the J C R A to provide affordable housing. Because they're too busy de-designating a hundred percent affordable projects as they did earlier this year. Um, shame on Liberty Science Center, um, so sad to hear again them say that Scholars Village is, is not just for scholars. Um, and at the end of the day, this looks like a bad deal. Um, I have more, uh, it's walking distance from the light rail. Um, but there, currently the sidewalks are, are, are almost non-existent from the light rail. Uh, there are no bike lanes from the light rail, um, parking is inadequate, as is, um, the little green space again is not enough. Um, if we can get a new Bayview Avenue bridge, um, that is walking friendly, so that it's not just downtown residents. Excuse me, baby, so it's not just downtown residents that can walk to this place, but if I could walk from my house on Myrtle Avenue. Yes, we're gonna take that soon, sorry, I, so many, three minutes is not enough when you have a toddler. It's, it's hard to act for South Side Jersey City residents to access Liberty State Park as it is. So a better community give back would be making, say, another light rail station on the south side of Jersey City. Or, um, a better Bayview Avenue Bridge to, um, Liberty State Park. More access to this beautiful space from, for residents on the south side. Um, let's see.
Ms. Walker, that was your time. One more question in there, that's fine.
Um, and, oh, biggest question, uh, if you provide affordable housing, there will be a reduction as, uh. Based on the number of units, at least a thousand dollars per year in taxes right now is obligated for re-. But it's gonna be reassessed after this meeting if it's approved, fifty million dollars just for the land, two million in taxes divided by five hundred units is four thousand. Per unit, just for the land, after the bill, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year in taxes per unit. So if, if they add affordable housing, they won't have to pay as much in taxes. Um, these figures I got from, uh, the former Mayor Jerry McCann, who also works in the audit office now. Um, so I just beg of you to add more community give back and more, and affordable housing. This project is not sensitive to the city's current affordable housing standard of fifteen percent.
All right, thank you, Ms. Walker, that's over your time, but we appreciate your time.
Thanks.
So council, um, do you want to address, I, I heard, uh, what were the unit costs?
Yeah, I mean, the unit, the proposed rents, I mean, uh, it's all, you, you know, the projections now, um, my client provided. He's, you know, studios, they're, they're, they're hoping to, to get, you know, around twenty-seven hundred, uh, on the studios. One bedrooms, um, about twenty-nine hundred to, um, thirty-six hundred. Two bedrooms, thirty-four hundred, um, it's up like around four thousand, and then three bedrooms would be about forty-five hundred. That's, that's their projections now. Um, you know, whether they get it or not, that's, that's, you know, a whole nother issue. But, um, that's what they're performing or, or penciling in now. Um, and, and as far as, I think the other question, why Scholars Village? I mean, it's, it's just always been, uh, identified as Scholars Village, I think the idea behind this, and I can't, I don't want to put words in the mouth of Paul Hoffman. But the idea is behind the, the whole SciTech City campus where you have an edgeworks is hoping to bring in entrepreneurs. And then, uh, the, the residential building is a place that, for an opportunity for people to live there. And then you have the STEM High School there, where some of those students, the idea and plan is to have them. Um, work with these, these existing businesses and entrepreneurs in the edgeworks building. So that, that, you know, all, you know, you're, you're kind of the sharing, you know, get the, the Bill Gates, uh, of the world. Uh, in there and, and to, uh, foster, you know, the, the young, the younger children to work with these, you know, smarter people and older people. Um, and that's, I think that's where Paul's concept came from, that's, that's the, that's really the idea behind Scholars Village, I believe.
All right, thank you, council. All right, anybody else from public eye, see one hand raised?
Promoting Sunday Victoria.
Good evening, I could see, all right, I don't know if I can hear you, but I'll swear in if you.
Sure, can you hear me? Okay, perfect.
Uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure, Sunday, S U N D A Y, like the day, Milona, M I L O N A, and twenty-five Hudson Street, Jersey, Jersey City, New Jersey, oh, three oh two.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am, we have three minutes for you.
Sure, so, um, actually I had initially one question as to if anything with the building is gonna be like LEED certified. If you guys are looking to go above and beyond any of the standards that are currently set in place for Jersey City. What about the building is going to make it fit in with the revitalization that's going on with Liberty State Park, or at least in that vein? Um, so that was one question, actually with Erica, what she brought up, Scholars Village, a few neighbors and I were discussing this over the weekend. It's misleading, a hundred percent, I concur, uh, we were trying to figure out, oh, are the students from SciTech City gonna be staying there? It is market rate, are their families going to be, be paying for it, is it gonna be, you know, guardianship, how is that gonna work? And apparently it isn't going to be intended at all for the students or for affordable housing. So I am a little concerned about how that is misleading as well, just for the community. Um, I think, I think that's pretty much it, except will my affordable housing and market rate and Dollar City in one. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your time.
Voting Diane Case.
And, uh, council, if we could just address, uh, there was nothing mentioned about the building. there was nothing mentioned about the building being LEED certified, correct?
Uh, yeah, actually, they, they will have LEED elements. Um, my understanding, I can have my architect address it, but my understanding, we, we do have, uh, LEED elements and, um, you know, they're exploring which, uh, rating they, they, they may be, may qualify for. So that is, that is part of the development.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, Dan. I'll swear in if you can raise your right hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Diane Case, last name is K A E S D.
Thank you.
Ms. Case, good evening. We have three minutes for you.
Yes. Uh, good evening to everyone. Uh, I have several concerns. I echo a lot of Erica Walker's concerns, especially regarding affordable housing. And once again, it, it tells me that, those of us who own historic buildings within the downtown and within the Jersey City are providing affordable housing, not the new buildings that, uh, are being built. Um, I have other questions regarding migratory bird, um, accommodations as far as glass and as far as design. Um, I haven't heard anything regarding that. The concerns also have been voiced in our neighborhood regarding the drop-offs and pickups along Phillips Street. We don't think that those are appropriate. And will only add to congestion and the backups along Phillips Street. Also, the way the public space is designed, it's designed in a manner that is very hard to access, and it's also designed in such a way that can be closed off as non-public very easily. And I'd like to see something in there that, uh, guarantees that that will remain open and remain public space because that's something that we have dealt with, um, throughout Jersey City where public space becomes private space very quickly. And lastly, and please don't take this personally, um, as an architect who spent her entire day trying to figure out how to, uh, deal with a collapsed wall with a whole bunch of members from the building trades, I find the use of brother not only offensive, but I find it inappropriate in this setting. So I would like to see that, uh, nomenclature, uh, not used. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Case. We appreciate your time. Counsel, do you want to, uh, address anything?
Just quickly, I mean, the, the, the drop-offs, um, you know, I know for the record that the plans were sent to Jersey City Engineering Department, so they've been reviewed by them and, and, uh, you know, any recommendations that they provide, we would, we would, uh, you know, comply with. And as noted during the presentation, uh, the, the, uh, it is open, uh, to the public. There are no barriers. There are no barriers between the lot line uh, and, and the boardwalk and the space, and that, that, uh, uh, is intended to, to continue into, continue into perpetuity. Uh, I know with regard to the birds, uh, that was brought up at one of the community meetings, and my clients are, are, um, addressing that, or they're, they're reviewing that, um, as part of their development process. So, so that, um, that, that is not an issue that, that is, um, forgotten.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Uh, all right, we're still in a public session, everybody. If, uh, anybody else wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you press star nine to raise your hands.
I see no more public. I would love to, uh, close the public, so I move to close the public.
All right. Motion and second, public is closed. Matt, do you want to, actually, uh, counsel, do you want to do a closing statement or, uh?
Hey. I, um, I think I'm okay. I mean, I just, real quick, it's, I think it's a transformational project here that completes the, the vision of SciTech City and the campus, and I, you know, I know there's differing opinions and, and that's, that's great, but, uh, we, we think it's a terrific project, um, you know, for, for the site and the campus.
All right. Thank you, counsel. All right, Matt, do you want to wrap us up? And, um, I do want, uh, we usually don't do this, but I think in light of, um, you know, a lot of the affordability questions that come back and forth, uh, if you could just highlight, you know, our role in the affordability process, um.
Sure. Uh, so this, uh, this site is in the Science and Technology District of the Liberty Harbor Redevelopment Plan, which was, uh, added to the Liberty Harbor Redevelopment Plan back in twenty seventeen. At that time, uh, the, the standards that were uh, adopted did not include, uh, affordable housing, housing provision in this zoning. And, uh, the variances that they have, uh, requested in their proposal as such, uh, does not require affordable housing. Or, or trigger affordable housing on site. They have, uh, provided testimony regarding their variances, um, to echo some of the standards, uh, that, that they are, uh, that they are bound by. Uh, so yes, there is a max height of a hundred and twenty feet in this zone. It is correct, as stated earlier, that there is no density standard. That is correct. There's no density standard in this district of the redevelopment plan. The plan always called for a, um, innovative parking approach. So shared parking was envisioned here, uh, and along the same vein, the building coverage was also set at fifty percent, thinking that this is a, like a campus that is, uh, going to, um, have a, a great deal of open space and landscaping. And some of the other sites, uh, do have very low, um, coverage in that regard. In some even zero, uh, percent building coverage. So what we're, what the variance is here, they're asking for, if you, if you consider at a campus level, they, they, they do seem reasonable. They don't seem to have any detrimental effect on the zone plan. And if us, they, they got into some of the design, I think it, it actually is a very attractive building. Wish they spent a little more time on some of the, the interesting window designs, um, just for the, uh, edification of the, the general public. It's a attractive project, um, with very innovative, uh, open space design incorporated into the roof of their lobby. If the commissioners have any other questions for me, I'm here. Uh, staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Matt. I have no other questions. Anybody else? Does anybody want to deliberate on anything?
I'm just gonna chime in one moment here. I, I know that they put in earlier that they agree to comply or address with the engineering and transportation comments. Uh, we do also have a number of, uh, recommended conditions in the staff, uh, planning memo. Uh, I just asked if they reviewed those and, uh, also similarly agree to comply with those.
Yes, we would comply with all of those.
Okay, thank you, counsel. All right. So if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, case P two-two dash two-two-zero as presented to our board here tonight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval.
Okay. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
I'm, I'm actually very excited about this project. We've been, uh, both Chairman and I have been in this, on this board for a while. And we've seen different, you know, we've, we've been hearing about this for a long, long time as a doctor and somebody who loves science. I think from the very beginning, when I heard about this project, I thought it was gonna be a really good idea and, and to use, um, Mr. Harrington's, uh, uh, words, uh, it, it was gonna be tra, uh, transformational. I think, I think this is gonna be that. Uh, I'm happy to see that we have something now going on that we're ready to move forward with. I, I run a lot through that street there, right in front of this, this project. And I've always thought that it would be a perfect place for a science center there. So I, I'm just really, really excited about it. I think that the deviations that are being sought, that include the, the variances, maximum building coverage, even building height, the minimum number of parking and the maximum number of signs, uh, are all justified in this case. So I'm super excited. Uh, I'm very happy that we're moving forward with this. I hear the public with all of you which are very valid concerns, by the way. I did have the same, some of the same concerns, including parking. And, uh, but I, I do think that if you kind of look at it as a whole, this project is gonna be a lot, bring a lot more positive than, than, than anything else. And so I gladly, uh, and enthusiastically vote I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I vote I.
Commissioner Green.
I.
Commissioner, Dr. Desai. I can't hear you, doctor.
Can you hear me now?
She disappeared. I, she might have, uh, left the meeting. I will wait for a moment here.
We're gonna definitely need her vote. There she is.
Commissioner, we did not hear your vote. Uh, uh, the vote is, roll call is still with you, uh, Commissioner Dr. Desai.
I would like to vote I, and I would say this is a very nice project. Especially Liberty Science Center, SciTech and Liberty School, and the area will come out very nice. Only problem is the parking, hundred fifty parking plus shared parking. That and transportation, there is a light rail there, but that's the only problem. But on the whole, I would vote I.
And Chair, Chairman Langston?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming down. Uh, so it's encouraging to see a lot of, uh, public comment. Um, I want to thank the applicant. You know, obviously, I, I share a lot of the, the concerns of the public on the affordability aspect. That being said, though, there's no affordable required here. Uh, it's not under our purview. As far as the other, you know, the, the variances, the, there's nothing here that's out of the ordinary. You know, some of them I do consider de minimis. Uh, I think going forward, the parking, the shared parking situation, uh, the overflow parking, I, I think it's where we should be, uh, headed toward as a city. You know, a lot of these buildings have parking at, at a considerable cost that could go towards, you know, more affordable units. But, you know, a lot of times they build these parking spots and these garages aren't awful. So I, I do welcome the, the shared parking, the overflow parking. Uh, I think it's a great idea. Uh, other than that, I, I think, once again, the variances are de minimis in nature. I agree with Mr. Height's testimony. And, um, I'm gonna vote I. This is like counsel said, this is, uh, transformative, and I'm happy to see this come to fruition.
On a motion approved with condition, motion carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Counsel, you, you ate up most of our meeting here with this. Uh, I hope you don't have anything else on tonight.
I do have a few others, so I'm killing myself.
All right. Uh, all right. Believe it or not, we're on, uh, item eleven. Uh, this case P two-three dash zero-zero-four is a final site plan amendment for thirty-six Jones Street.
Promoted Lauren Tardanico.
Hi, yes, good evening. Can, um, can everyone hear me?
We can, counsel, yes.
Great, thank you. Um, Cameron, good evening. Um, if you could assist me in promoting, um, our witnesses, um, I'd greatly appreciate it. Um, our witnesses this evening, um, Sam Bellamy, I see you just promoted him. Also Ahmed Amara and Esther Spurber. If you can find them in the, in the audience.
Okay, they've all joined us.
Perfect. Um, thank you. Um, again, good evening for the record, Lauren Tardanico of the Law Firm of Keys, Ashenian and John Tomasi, on behalf of the applicant, Judd LLC. The applicant is here this evening seeking amended final site plan approval in connection with the development of the property located at thirty-six Jones Street, uh, which is designated as block ten thousand seven hundred four, lot thirty-six on the tax maps of the city of Jersey City. The property is located within the Journal Square redevelopment area and zoning for the property therefore is governed by the Journal Square, um, redevelopment plan. Just by way of brief background, in two thousand eighteen, the applicant, um, received preliminary and final site plan approval with deviation relief to construct a five-story, ten-unit residential apartment building on the property, which building would also contain about eight hundred and seventy square feet of retail space on the ground floor, along with a cellar and rooftop recreation space. The applicant is seeking to amend that approval this evening to convert the approximately eight hundred and seventy square feet of retail space into a ground floor residential unit. With respect to that proposed conversion, the applicant also proposes some minor modifications to the building, which our witnesses will discuss, um, in detail this evening. Um, and in connection with our proposed project, the applicant does seek D V, a deviation from the redevelopment plan to permit the proposed residential units to remain at grade elevation, whereas the plan requires that a ground floor residential use be three feet above sidewalk grade or setback from the front property line by three feet and screened with raised landscaping. So to discuss our application in greater detail this evening, um, we intend to call three witnesses, Ahmed Amara and Esther Spurber, who are the architects for the project, as well as our professional planner, Sam Bellamy of Jezner Robin. Um, and just, Mr. Lampy, before we begin our presentation, um, we did want to note for the record that, um, in connection with the hearing this evening, the applicant did publish legal notice and provided the required notice to property owners within two hundred feet of the subject property. We did submit our affidavit of proof of service to the board last week and submitted another copy, um, to Mr. Black today. Um, and so if it's all right with you, we'd like to mark that, um, affidavit as exhibit A one.
Chairman, I am receiving that affidavit of publication proof of mailing. The notice was sent for this evening's meeting. We've had the opportunity to review it. It does appear to be in order. So we can mark it as day one for purposes of the record.
All right. Thanks, Santo. We appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, so if the board has no questions for me, we'd like to, uh, begin with our, uh, presentations by, uh, Mr. Amara and Ms. Spurber.
So counsel, if we're going to be using anything outside of what was submitted, slides, et cetera, we can mark those as A two. They can be described. Tell us a number of si, slides or whatever they are, and then obviously at the conclusion of the hearing, we just asked that they be submitted to city plan.
Absolutely. Um, at this point, we are just, uh, going to be utilizing the, um, plans that were submitted to the board in connection with the application, so they're already part of the record. As we, um, as we do get into our witness testimony, um, I did want to just note one item for clarification. Mr. Amara is the architect of record for the project and is a licensed architect within the state of New Jersey. Ms. Spurber is the design architect for the property and will be handling the bulk of the presentation this evening. She is not licensed in New Jersey, um, but as Mr. Amara will, um, confirm the plans that were prepared in connection with this application were prepared by her under his direction and supervision.
Understood.
Thank you. Um, so if we could just begin with Amara, just to kind of walk the board through that part. If we could swear him in, please.
Sure. Hi, Matt. Uh, do you swear any testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
For the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure. Ahmed Amara, A H M E D, and last name is E M A R A.
Thank you.
Mr. Amara, good evening. Always a pleasure. Uh, your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
I'm sorry?
Uh, your license is current in New Jersey.
It is. I'm actually in by own presenting too, so yes.
Oh, you gotta get home. You gotta get back to Jersey City. Um, all right. So, uh, thank you, sir. You're qualified and, uh, go ahead. The floor is yours.
I, um, I, I want to mention that this is, um, a, a very simple application. We had gotten this project approved in the past for a five-story, um, at the time with a retail space on the ground floor. The idea is to replace the ground floor retail space with a, uh, residential unit. Esther will be doing the, the rest of the, uh, presentation. The presentation has been prepared by both, um, uh, uh, my office and Esther's office. I've reviewed everything. I'm in agreement with everything. I've reviewed everything. I'm in agreement with everything. Um, and we're on the same page, and at this point, I can, I'll allow Esther to, to, to move forward with the presentation with your permission, of course.
Absolutely, uh, Mr. Amara, appreciate it, and, uh. Counsel, let's bring up your other witness.
Perfect, yes, Mr. Amara, just to confirm, these plans were prepared under your supervision, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great, and then, uh, if we could swear, and Miss Barber, we can, uh, start to walk through our presentation.
Yes, just waiting. If you can raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Esther Spurber, E S T H E R, Spurber, S P E R B E R.
Thank you.
Ms. Barber, good evening. Uh, obviously, uh, we're just qualifying you as a fact witness tonight. You worked under the direction of Mr. Amara. And, uh, that's good enough for, for us, and the floor is yours.
Great, so can I share my screen?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Ms. Barber, as you just begin that, you are in fact a licensed architect, just not in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. And you prepared and are familiar with the architectural plans that were submitted to the board in connection with the application that you're sharing right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Lauren, do you want me to go through the slides, or do you want to?
No, please, uh, if you could just start by prepare, providing the board with a brief overview of the property and just what we're proposing here.
Absolutely, so, um, we designed and constructed with, um, on its office, um, a five-story building. Um, with ten apartments and a commercial space. Um, it was approved back in two thousand eighteen. And as you can see in this slide. Um, the ground floor had a commercial space that was about eight hundred and seven, uh, seventy square feet. This is facing Jones Street. Um, the site itself has a kind of lomboid spa- uh, shape. Um, and, um, we. Uh, utilize that by building a kind of rectilinear building with a kind of trapezoid backyard and a small yard in the front. Um, we would like to convert this commercial space. Into a residential unit. It will be another one bedroom, one bath, similar to the two we have on the ground floor. This is, um, we are seeking two deviations. One is, um, to allow this to remain on ground floor. We, on street level, we. Can't raise it three feet as required by the, um, the plan. Um, we also are not planning to change the footprint of the building, therefore we wouldn't be able to, um. Step back this, um, front facade three feet. However, we do think we have found, um, alternative ways to make it. And create the separation between, uh, the residential private space and the street. So we are proposing, this is a current, um. Storefront on the ground floor. Um, we have a series of, um, glass panels. There, there is a door into the commercial space. Um, we are planning to remove that, so you can see it down. This is the demolition plan. We were gonna take out the door. Um, this panel and this panel, these three panels, as well as the one here with the vent for the future. Um, HVAC for the commercial space and replace it with this. Um, new facade design, so we would add, uh, three windows that would serve, I go back to the floor plan. Um, the living room and the bedroom. Um, these would be operable windows, similar to the windows we have in the rest of the building. Um, we were, we will be covering the remaining storefront glass with, um. A film that will make it, um, opaque and then building, uh. Insulated, um, sheet rock wall behind the glass to create, um, a more energy efficient and privacy, um, that we are seeking. Um, this is my last slide. Um, this is, uh, the kind of proposal that we were asking for approval for.
Thank you. Um, and just if I could ask, um, just a few very minor clarification questions. Um, so am I correct that the plan requires that ground floor residential either be raised three feet above sidewalk grade or step back three feet?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what the applicant is seeking, um, relief from this evening, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, and you did walk the board through, thank you, um, the changes to the existing door and, uh, windows and that application of the film to provide for the privacy to. Kind of comply with the intent of the redevelopment plan here. Um, are there any, um, additional improvements to the exterior of the building proposed? Kind of to provide some additional screening?
Um, yes, I forgot to mention, I'm, I'm gonna go back to the floor plan. We are proposing to add a planting area in front of this front facade in this triangular space that we have between. Our lot line and the building. And that will create additional screening and a friendlier storefront.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and just in connection, um. With these proposed improvements, um, have you had an opportunity to review the staff memo that was prepared by, uh, the Division of City Planning and dated, um, June thirteenth?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, and in connection with that, um. You know, in light of the fact that the building has already been constructed and is existing and occupied, um, you know. I guess, is it the applicant's position that certain of those, the staff recommendations within that letter, um, are really. Things that would have been addressed in connection with the initial construction. Um, for example, certifications from the original professionals as to the original construction, comments from engineering and the municipal utilities authority. And the initially, um, proposed landscaping?
Yes, and we have gone through that in the original planning review.
Right, so those items would have already been addressed?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I have no questions, no further questions for Miss Barber.
All right, thank you, counsel. Um, Ms. Barber, uh, just let me back up for a second. So the glass is staying in place, correct?
Um, the main glass is staying in place. We are removing, um. Three elements from the glass, the door, and then two glass panels, replacing them with a lower section that would be similar glass and an upper operable window. Um, those are the three windows that will be serving the living room and the bedroom.
Okay, and.
And then, yes, I'm sorry.
The outside facing the street is gonna be covered with panels, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um. I, I guess my next question. Is for our staff, uh. Kim, uh, I guess you're handling this. This was one of Tim's applications before he left?
Yeah.
Okay, so. As far as building code goes, is, is that allowed to leave that glass section in there? And i- is the fire rating sufficient? On that, that panel?
So, huh, the remaining conditions that, uh, I have in my staff report. Are that, one, yeah, they have to meet all construction code and building code requirements. I would be blindly, blindly guessing. I, I, I cannot say for certain whether it is.
Uh, Mr. Amara, are you able to speak to that?
Um, yes, I, I didn't hear the full question. If you could just repeat it one more time, please?
So, uh, Mr. Amara, I'm just concerned about the, the glass. You know, staying in place and being sandwiched in between sheet rock insulation on the inside. And then a panel on the outside, is that, does that?
Sorry, I, I think I misunderstood the question. We weren't planning to put a panel on the exterior of the glass. The glass will remain. The exterior with the film that will make it translucent. And on the interior, we're gonna build an internal sheet rock wall.
Okay, so is, is that up to building code, Mr. Amara?
Uh, yes, it is. This is an exterior, uh, property line facing the public right of way. The, the, the fire distance, separation distance is measured from the center of the public right of way, which would be the center of the street. If you're over thirty feet, you're not, you're not, you're not required to fire, to provide fire rating to the facade. Uh, that's how you see, for example, uh, a full glass building facing the street, but the back and the sides still have to have the protection. I believe that is up to code, correct?
Okay, understood. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um. That was really my only question. Um. Anybody else? Anybody else from the board? Any questions?
No, nothing for, for me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barber. We appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, and if it pleases the board, we'd like to move on to our professional planner, Mr. Bellamy.
Sure.
Hi, Samuel, sorry, and if you could raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, Samuel Bellamy, last name B E L L A M Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellamy, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you numerous times in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Good evening, uh, yes, my license is current and in good standing.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy, just to start, uh, did your office prepare the statement of principal points submitted to the board in connection with this application?
That is correct.
Perfect, and can you just start by explaining to the board what you did in anticipation of your testimony this evening?
Sure, I, I did visit the site. Um, I've also reviewed the plans and, uh, app- application material. Reviewed the Journal Square redevelopment plan, the master plan, and, uh. And also, uh, any other related documents and the staff memo.
Okay, perfect. Um, and if you could just summarize for the board, um, the relief that's being requested this evening?
Sure, so it is just the one deviation that we're seeking tonight. Um, and it's really triggered from the conversion of the currently, uh, ground floor retail space to the proposed residential unit. Um, the redevelopment plan does permit and, and is, in the specific zones on four A of the Journal Square redevelopment plan. Does permit ground floor residential units. Um, the current building design does have two residential units in the rear of the building. Um, the requirement for ground floor residential is that it either be setback. Uh, three feet into the property and, and screened with raised landscaping or be raised three feet above grade. Um, so what we're seeking is the current retail spaces at grade. Um, and is not setback or, or screened by, by the raised landscaping, so. Really, that, that transformation of that space is what's, what's triggering the, the deviation request tonight. Um, we are proposing, as, as Ms. Barber walked the board through, to provide an opaque screening along the, the glass windows. What that does is, uh. Prevent, uh, visibility into the unit, but still allows for light and light to come in through the, the frontage windows. Um, and that also asks, a- acts as a level of, uh, screening and, and, and security, uh, for the residential unit. Um, we're also proposing a, a front yard planter, um, in front of the building. Um, this thought is irregular and the building is angled to the property line, so you have a, a zero foot setback at the north, uh, lot line. Um, that extends to a, a five foot setback, uh, on the south lot line, so that, that creates a, a sidewalk width that varies from eleven feet to sixteen feet. Um, so within that setback area, within our property lines, we are, we are able to provide for a planter that does. Provide for that additional level of buffering and screening to the residential unit. Um, and, and we think that meets the intent of the requirement. Um, obviously, being a constructed building. Um, there are hardships to either raising it up or setting it back further, so we, we feel by providing for the, the, uh. The planter box and also the screening that we are meeting the intent of the, uh, setback or, or raise requirement for ground for residential units. Um, we're also maintaining that the frontage, uh, we are replacing some of the storefront windows and doors with the residential windows and doors, so. Um, we do continue to provide for an active street use. Um, the, the street, the. Frontage map of the redevelopment plan does call for this area to be retail space optional, so it's not required to be retail here. Um, but by maintaining a, a residential use, we are continuing the inactive frontage, um, continue that, that streetscape design. Um, so we do feel that we are continuing the, uh, the intent of the redevelopment plan here. This project does advance several of the purposes of the municipal land use law. Again, it is an appropriate use and development of the property, converting the retail to a permitted residential unit. Um, there is no density standard in the Journal Square Plan, so by adding an additional unit, we are continuing to maintain an appropriate population. Population density on the property consistent on purpose E. Then again, um, we're maintaining an active frontage. Um, providing for a compatible residential windows within the, 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 uh, retail, uh, facade, um, so that does, uh. Promote, uh, desirable visual environment consi- consi- consistent with purpose I. Um, overall, I think that the benefits of, of the proposed project would substantially outweigh any detriment here. Um, moving into the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare. Again, we are, um, proposing to convert the ground floor residential unit used to a residential unit. Um, and it meets the intent of the ground floor residential requirement, um, by providing for those elements of safety, screening and buffering. Um, from the public sidewalk. Um, in addition, we are, um, that unit will become an additional ground for ADA unit, so I think that's another positive aspect here. Um, in my opinion, I don't see any substantial impairments in the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. Again. The residential is permitted on the ground floor, so we're continuing, um, to promote the purpose of zone four by providing for an appropriate density. Uh, near the General, Journal Square Transportation Center. Um, with that, I, I think this project, uh, meets both the positive and negative criteria and the, the. Um, relief can, can be granted here. Um, that would conclude my direct testimony unless, uh, Ms. Tardanico has any questions for me.
Uh, thank you. I think you pretty much covered it. Just to clarify, um. It's your professional opinion that this also, in addition to advancing goals of the MLUL, furthers, uh, goals of the applicable redevelopment plan in connection. With its goals?
Yes, that, that's correct. Both the purposes on four and, and several of the objectives of the Journal Square Plan.
Okay, perfect. Um, I have no additional questions for Mr. Bellamy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellamy. I have no questions. Uh, anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate your time. Counsel, is that your presentation?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, it is. Um, so we thank the board for its time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public, if you'd like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Mr. Chair, I see no public. I move to close the public. Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Uh, Kim, do you want to close this up here?
Yes, okay, so, um, I believe. Uh, counsel was referring to my, uh, staff report from the previous meeting. I did update it, and I only have three conditions. They're the standard boilerplate language for conditions. Uh, condition one, though, however, does touch upon the construction building code compliance. Um. So I think this condition, um, comes into play, especially here, um, considering we had questions about that wall and. Of course, that would, uh, not get developed if it did not meet the building and construction code, uh, requirements in the city. Um, so planning staff, just again, to reiterate, uh, would ask that your, uh. Client agree to the conditions stated in the memo posted on the portal and, uh, dated June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, are those conditions acceptable?
Uh, I, I believe that they are, um, I. I didn't see an updated review memo from you, so I don't actually, I only have one with like six or seven conditions. Uh, and we had indicated on the record the ones that were, um, you know. Presumably inapplicable because the building had been constructed. We had, um, I don't believe we'd received any M U A or engineering comments, so there would be no need to revise our plans. There's no additional landscaping being proposed here, so, um. There would be no need for that as well, and then the third item. Related to, um, the certifications that you'd normally provide in connection with the original construction. I mean, I, I think Mr. Amara. Uh, did testify that our proposed construction would be in compliance with building code requirements, so to the extent that we're certainly, um, able to agree to that.
Okay, so, um, it sounds like you did not see the updated memo that I posted on the portal, so first, let's just mark that into evidence, uh, suppose. A two for the record. Um, and I'm just going to read quickly into the record, the staff recommendations. Um, there are three of them. Uh, one is all materials in color selection shall be shown on the final plans. No change to the facade and site design, including materials, as well as any changes that may be required by the Office of Construction Code. Shall be permitted without consultation with planning staff and approval by the planning board. To all testimony given by, I'm sorry, I gotta mute green. Okay, two, all testimony given by the applicant and their expert witnesses shall be binding. Three, the architect of record shall submit a signed and sealed affidavit confirming that the final building was constructed as approved. Um. So.
Um, Cameron, do you mean, just to clarify that last one, do you just mean in connection with the modifications that were done now, because that original certification would have been. Um, provided in connection with the C O. This is an already constructed and occupied building. So I, I think, Mr. Amara, there'd be no issue with you providing some kind of a certification in connection with. The construction being proposed here, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
And when we do signature sets, the zoning office requires it, so it would, yeah, he would have. And when we do signature sets, the zoning office requires it. So it would, yeah, he would have to, but um, no, uh, I've already talked way more than I wanted to. Uh, it meets the objectives and goals of the redevelopment plan. Um, the professional planners' testimony provided by Mister Bellamy uh, has covered all of the uh, concerns the staff had regarding the variances. Um, the space still functions well within the uh, the design that is planned for the Journal Square twenty sixty and um, it it'll function well and it will work within the context of the twenty sixty plan. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Kim. We appreciate it.
Kim, Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two, three dash zero, zero, four as presented to our board here tonight.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Vice Chair, Doctor Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner, Doctor Desai.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Green.
I.
And Chairman Langston.
Hi.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, it is nine oh two. Uh, let's take a five minute break and uh, we do have a ten o'clock cutoff for uh, any new applications. We won't open a new application after ten. And uh, no new testimony after eleven. So uh, that rule is in effect and uh, it's nine oh three. Let's come back at nine oh eight, everybody. Okay, let's come to order again, everyone. And let's call case P two, three dash zero, one, two is a minor site plan for three uh, thirty-four, forty-seven Kennedy Boulevard.
Good evening, Mister Chairman. Uh, Commissioners Benjamin Wine of Prime and Tuvell on behalf of the applicant thirty-four, forty-seven Kennedy Boulevard J C N J L L C. Uh, everybody can hear me all right again?
We can, counsel.
All right. And just to confirm, all the commissioners are back. Before we get started, as I know, we just have a quorum.
While we wait for that, Ben, who's on your team?
Sure, I just have one witness with me this evening. Uh, Rami Bittar is our project architect. I see him in the list as R A B architects.
Okay.
Okay, do you see everyone still here, counsel? So the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, so good evening again, as I said before. The application in question this evening is uh, for the property located at three, four, four, seven Kennedy Boulevard. That's block two, six, zero, two, lot nineteen, and we are located in the fairly new R C two zoning district. Just by way of orientation, the property is an interior lot located along the west side of Kennedy Boulevard between Thorn Street and Lincoln Street. Uh, currently, what's on the property is a three-story residential building, uh, which if you've been by the site recently, you'll note is in fair disrepair. So the project or the proposal, rather, this evening is to construct a new four-story, four-family residential building that would entirely comply with the R C two requirements. So what we did as well in advance of this meeting is we did reach out over the last several months as we developed the project to uh, Mister Capadia of the Heights Community Coalition, uh, who did have a couple of questions generally related to would we notify neighbors during construction? Would we protect protect their buildings? Things of that nature. And of course, we responded, we we believe we satisfied the concerns. Um, as we got a response indicating uh, that they have no real concern then with the project. So with me this evening, uh, I do have Rami Bittar, who's our project architect. Uh, he's the only witness I intend to have this evening, uh, given as well that we do not have any variances associated with this application. Um, but certainly, uh, Mister Chair, if you have any questions with me, um, otherwise I'm happy to proceed straight with Mister Bittar.
No, let's get right into testimony, counsel. We appreciate it.
All right, sure. So Rami, I do see you there. You are on mute.
Hi, Rami. I'll swear in. If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Rami Bittar, R A M I, last name Bittar, B I T A R.
Thank you.
Mister Bittar, good evening. Uh, we have qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
Yes, it's current.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Chairman. So Rami, if you can go ahead, uh, bring up your plans on the screen and walk the board through our minor site plan application.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just let me know when you are seeing my screen.
Yes.
We need to answer. Okay, so thank you so much, uh, counsel. I want to start uh, with the existing, just very quickly uh, to show the existing condition. This is the existing building that we intend to demolish. It is in a very uh, disarrayed and and uh, disrepair uh, situation. Um, adjacent to this existing building, there is a large development uh, taking place. Uh, obviously, this picture is an older picture when we started the project, but the building is uh, open uh, right now, um, adjacent to it. Uh, the existing building is has uh, almost a zero side yard setback. And uh, what we intend to uh, do in this application, it's simply uh, uh, a straightforward application. Uh, we're going from that existing to this uh, proposed building. Now, the site is on Kennedy Boulevard, is located in R C two zone. And it is a slightly uh, undersized. It's not twenty-five hundred. It is a little less than about fifteen uh, square feet shy of the twenty-five hundred. Uh, the survey shows uh, ninety-nine, thirty-nine instead of hundred and ninety-nine, forty-four uh, by twenty-five. Uh, that's the existing survey. Uh, as I said, it's located on uh, Kennedy Boulevard. Um, what uh, the zoning in the R C two um, brings uh, uh, is uh, the requirements for the uh, twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, we're shy approximately fifteen square feet of that. Uh, the width is twenty-five hun- uh, twenty-five uh, feet. And the lot depth, of course, shy of that. Um, the uh, all parameters of the uh, requirement and requirements of the uh, R C two residential and commercial district uh, is uh, uh, complied with. All parameters are complied with. And we show on the zoning calculation that we really don't uh, ask for any uh, variance. The proposed floor plan shows, um, uh, I again, I am viewing the plans that uh, was submitted. Um, the proposed floor plans show uh, existing, I'm sorry. So at the proposed cellar, because of the topography of the structure uh, and the land, uh, it slopes from the uh, Kennedy Boulevard toward the back, it slopes significantly. Uh, we have to uh, sort of have the level uh, uh, of the uh, apartments kind of uh, by level. We're proposing uh, the entry level to be at the front, uh, the right-hand corner on Kennedy Boulevard with the two exits, uh, this is to comply with the requirements of for two exits for store, uh, four-story buildings. Uh, one uh, accessible apartment on the first floor, there is a uh, a difference in the uh, level. Uh, as we can see between the uh, living space, the dining, living room, uh, and kitchen uh, space and the bedroom, and we intend to uh, provide a small wheelchair lift. That level uh, difference is about three feet, just to uh, sort of respect the topography of the uh, of the land itself. And then uh, three, uh, it's a very straightforward uh, three bedrooms and a bathroom with a a space toward the outside uh, rear yard uh, private for the uh, first floor unit. And on top, uh, three uh, stories uh, with uh, one apartment per level. And that apartment is a three-story. Of course, we set back on top because the of the uh, setback requirements, the the coverage on the first floor is permitted to be eighty-five percent. While on the uh, top floors above the first floor, it is seventy percent. So we set, we set back uh, approximately fifteen feet. And uh, we uh, provide the the building depth to be approximately the uh, seventy feet. Uh, a little shy of seventy feet, sixty-nine feet. And of course, uh, three bedrooms, kitchen, uh, living room, dining room, open. And then again, it's late in the evening. Um, I would like to uh, stop short here and just open it for questions because it is actually a straightforward applications. Three uh, four-story building, first floor accessible and uh, three other uh, levels, uh, one apartment per level. Uh, rooftops, uh, green rooftop and rooftop terrace. And uh, that's very much it. Uh, the elevations and of course, we go from uh, as I said, we go from uh, the existing, which we can see here to what we are proposing on um, again, and and showing it here. So uh, again, it is very late in the evening. I would like to be mindful of you, uh, everybody's time here. And just to uh, ask if you guys have any uh, question. And thank you so much for having us tonight.
Yeah, Rami, thank you very much. I just had one follow-up question as I I'm, I think the board always is interested in noting. Uh, where are the mechanicals going to be located for this building, for the units?
So the mechanical floor is going to be on the uh, on the, the mechanical units are all located on the top, uh, on the roof. And uh, on the roof, right behind the stairs. So we have two stairs accessing the roof uh, for to provide the two means of ingress. The mechanical uh, room are uh, or the mechanical space is really fenced uh, screened on top of the roof uh, behind, uh, very far from the uh, street level, and it's closer to the rear yard.
Okay. All right, Mister Chair, thank you. I I I really, I know it was a relatively short presentation, but I really don't believe I have anything else for Mister Bittar at this point.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, yeah, I have no questions for Mister Bittar. Um, anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you, Mister Bittar. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And counsel, you said earlier that was your only witness.
Yeah, I'll I'll, you know, reserve the right to sum up to the extent it's necessary, but uh, that would be my entire presentation.
Of course. Okay, thank you, counsel. And uh, Mister Bittar, if you could, please stop your screen share.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Mister Chair, I see no public. I move to close the public.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. Um, let me get back to my agenda here. And Francisco, this is your application. Do you have anything you want to add?
Let me really brief. The application is proposing to demolish the existing structures, as we've mentioned. Um, it's in the new uh, R C two zone. There are no variants being requested. I did have a question, Mister Wine. Does the applicant agree to the conditions in my staff report?
So Francisco, I didn't see one on the portal. I might have missed it.
No, they sent it to you in the email. Might have been a few months ago when this was in the March.
That's that's possible. Um, I don't have one. Do you mind just reading off the, I assume there's standard conditions?
Yeah, so let me grab it. Okay, bear with me. There are seven. Um, half of them are pretty standard. So the first one, all materials and color selections shall be shown on final plans. No change to the facade and site design, including materials, as well as changes that may be required by the Office of Construction Code shall be permitted without consultation with and approval by planning staff. Two, all staff test, oh, sorry. All testimony given by the applicant and their witness, their expert witness in accordance with the application shall be binding. Three, the applicant shall comply with all Jersey City Review Agent Commons if they were provided. Four, all street trees and landscaping shall be installed in accordance with the three forty-five dash sixty-six prior to an issuance of certificate of occupancy. Green roof shall be installed prior to an issuance of certificate of occupancy. Applicant shall provide an affidavit from the architect of record representing that everything is consistent with the final approved plans. This affidavit should also speak to the confirmation that the green roof um, was installed at the same size or larger presented for approval. And lastly, applicant owners shall comply with all conditions. And lastly, applicant owners shall comply with all conditions of approval set forward on the record by the planning board.
Okay, yeah, I have no objection, certainly happy to comply with those conditions.
All right. And with that said, staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you, Francisco.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that this time to approve case P two three dash zero one two is presented to our board tonight.
A second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Dr. Decide.
I.
Commissioner Green.
I.
And Chairman Lincoln.
I.
Mission carries all in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody, have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you, Council, you too.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Let's move on to item thirteen is case P two two dash one six four. Is a preliminary and final major site plan with C variants for three thirty seven Johnston Ave.
Mr. Harrington, I did not get the proof of mailing. I just got the affidavit of publication on this thing.
Oh, Jesus. Let me see. Yeah, this is sent over. Let me flip it. Sent over to Cameron on the seventh, so.
Yeah, I, I, it's on the portal. I can forward it to you real quick.
What I have is just the transmittal letter transmitting the affidavit of publication with the affidavit of publication. It's only two pages. I'm not seeing the proof of service on the portal either.
It's under just the address. The file name is just the address, three thirty seven. Yeah, so I just downloading it and putting it in a folder.
All right, hold on, I just clicked on that.
Yeah, I just emailed it to you.
Okay. Chairman, I got distracted. Did we actually call the matter?
We did, Council.
Okay. Mr. Harrington, whenever you're ready, put your put it on the record and then we'll qualify the notices.
Uh, just before we do that, Council, um, given the time, it's nine twenty five right now. Your the application following this is also yours. Kim, do we want to start looking at an end time here? We don't open a new application after ten o'clock?
Yeah, that would definitely make sense.
No way Mr. Harrington gets through this one in forty minutes.
This, this is an easy one. This is a quick one.
Said that about side deck.
Oh, I didn't say that.
But I see Mr. Vandermark, so I'm putting the over under on forty five minutes.
Um, if, if you don't mind, I, I can just pull up the attorneys right now. Gerard, I'm promoting Gerard right now.
Sure.
Hi, good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners.
Council, good evening.
Good. How are you? How are you? I was actually just typing an email to Cameron and Matt as you made this announcement. I understand and have no issue carrying to the next meeting of what in twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth is our next meeting, Council.
Okay, I would just, I, I, I noticed this, so if we could just preserve the notice, that'd be great.
Absolutely. So we'll call case P two three dash zero six eight is a final major site plan amendment for seven eleven Montgomery Street. That's going to be carried to a date certain July twenty fifth with present, with preservation of notice. I got tripped up there. I'm trying to rush. And Council, thank you. We appreciate it. Thanks for hanging in there.
No, cool. Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Okay.
So enjoy yourself.
Thank you. I'll try.
All right, we do have
Mike Higgins is promoted.
I'm here for item seventeen, one nineteen storms. If the board thinks we need to carry, then, then we can do that. But I, I think I could beat the record for quickest application if
Council, you're welcome to hang around. We do have, after this one, we have one in front of you that should be short. But you're more than welcome to hang in there for a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Council. Cam, I see an application for West Side Ave. I think we're going to eat up forty minutes just carrying applications here.
Yeah, I don't see a Duncan in the audience, so I I've been trying to promote Zachary Rosenberg, one of the other ones, but we, we can wait, I, I, you know. We can come back to them.
Okay, yeah, let's come back to them then. So all right, Council, the floor is yours and we're under three thirty seven Johnston Ave right now.
Okay, so are we all square on our notices yet? Or you're reviewing them, Santa? I'll, I'll give an overview of it.
Chairman, I am going to receive the affidavit of publication proof of mailing for three three seven Johnson Avenue. All does appear to be in order. We can mark them as A one for the record.
All right, thank you, Council.
Thank you. So for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This application is pretty straightforward. It's on the corner of Whiten and Johnston Avenue. It's the property is located in the Morris Canal redevelopment area in the mixed use A zone. There is a provision in this zone, a bonus provision that if you if you do five percent affordable units, you can get a height of fifty five feet. We are, that would, that would result in third, in two units of the proposed project of thirty three units being affordable. We are, we are requesting a variance, a slight variance. Which allows us for about five feet in height and a six story. And we are also proposing one additional affordable unit as part of it. The, we have also had discussions with the Division of Affordable Housing. And the breakdown would be one, one bedroom, one two bedroom and one three bedroom affordable unit in the event this is approved. We have also presented to the Morris Canal Community Group, excuse me, and made some facade changes upon the request of Cameron. So with that said, I'm going to get out of the way as I'm coughing and hand it over to Anthony Vandermark. I'm, I'm going to keep my engineer on the sidelines in event you have any questions. But Anthony's going to take you through the site and then have Sam Bellamy address the requested variance.
All right, thank you, Council.
Your testimony give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, that is Anthony C. Vandermark Jr. Vandermark, V is in Victor A N D E R M A R K. Principal of the architectural firm MBMK Architecture. Thank you.
Mr. Vandermark, good evening. Always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
It is, Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Very good. Thank you very much. I will share my screen for the board. We have before you a six story application at three thirty seven Johnston Avenue. Just to give everyone a brief overview of where the site is located. Again, as Mr. Harrington had previously stated, it's in the Morris Canal redevelopment planned area. Mixed use A zone, center graphic here, if I zoom in. Property backs up to the Dr. Lena Edwards Park. We have approximately ninety five feet of frontage on Whiten Street and a fifty foot frontage on Johnston Avenue that runs east to west. Zooming out, the property is currently vacant. There are two preexisting curb cuts that we are proposing to eliminate. That should add two cars back onto the street as part of this application. Taking you to the overall program of the, of the proposal. We have thirty three residential units, including three affordable. The residential unit breakdown would be thirteen studios. Eighteen one bedrooms, one two bedroom, one three bedroom. And of the three affordable units, we have a one, a two and a three, as Mr. Harrington had previously stated. Again, a six story proposal at fifty nine feet, eight inches in height. The baseline redevelopment plan permits a four story building at forty five feet in height. With the bonus provision of a five percent affordable give back, you're at fifty five feet and five stories. And again, we are requesting one variance for an additional six story, which is the equivalent of less than ten percent at four foot eight in height onto the fifty five foot bonus. That bonus or that request gives us an additional unit taking us to ten percent affordable as far as the give back. This application is also providing twenty indoor bicycle parking spaces. Two outdoor bicycle parking spaces with two additional retail spaces at grade at one thousand three hundred and sixty seven and eight hundred and thirty five. This site does not require parking. It is less than sixty feet in width. And therefore, not required as part of the redevelopment plan. Proposed site plan I have before you, we are proposing all new curbing and sidewalks around the perimeter of the property. Again, two street frontages at Johnston Avenue and Whiten Street. Providing five new street trees, all street trees and gratings and planting areas are complying with the Jersey City Forest Street Standard. Providing two new ADA tactile ramps at the intersection as shown in the site plan. Along the curb line at Whiten Street, we are providing a perviable paver system for allowing drainage onto the sidewalk and back into the soil. I'll get into it as part of the floor plan presentation. We do have an extensive green roof and an upstairs roof deck area that essentially located, located here in ten. If I take you within the building to the first floor plan, is the white graphic to the left. At the corner, at the intersection, we are providing one commercial retail space at one thousand three hundred and sixty seven. We have essentially located retail or cafe space at eight hundred and thirty five. The lobby is centrally located off of Whiten Street. As part of this proposal, please note that the, the property sits within the AE flood zone. So we will have a combination of both flood barriers and wet floodproofing at some of the exit points. Again, that will be fully compliant with the DEP requirements and this application is subject to that approval. The additional spaces on the first floor, we have other utility spaces and of course, the interior bike room at twenty interior bicycle parking spaces. Graphic to the right, which is colored, which is your second floor plan. We are proposing five units at the second floor. The yellow unit would be a studio at five hundred and twenty six square feet. The two blue units to the top of page are a five hundred and forty five and an eight hundred and eighteen square foot one bedroom. The green graphic is a two bedroom, two bath at nine hundred and forty eight square feet, and we have a three bedroom bottom page at one thousand ninety nine square feet. So five units at the second floor. Nice unit mixture. And again, the two bedroom and the three bedroom are going to be affordable units. Typical floors, three through six, so four floors in total. We have seven units. We have four one bedrooms and they range from five forty six to seven twenty seven. And we have three studios at four fifty nine, four sixty six, four seventy nine square feet. So again, at thirty three units, thirteen studios, eighteen one bedrooms, one two bedroom, one three bedroom, as previously described. Roof plan, we are proposing a roof deck at forty four percent coverage. That total square footage is two thousand eighty three square feet. We are also providing a one thousand fifty eight square foot extensive green roof area. That's the equivalent of twenty two percent of the overall site area. So substantial amount of site area being covered here with extensive green roof. And again, water will hit this extensive green roof slowly dissipate back into the roof leaders and into the municipal system. Stormwater detention is not required as part of this application, but we do have green elements as previously mentioned. Going back to the exterior of the building, six story building. Ground for corner retail. We have two principal materials at the two street frontages. Modular brick masonry, as you can see, it's a terracotta orange color. We have vertical piers of this brick masonry. And we have a gray ACM or aluminum composite material at the corner and then it flanks back over the top. At the entry points, at the ground floor, at the sidewalk level, we do have steel projected canopies. None of those projections, although can leave it into the right way, are not habitable space. As you can see from this rendering graphic, again, we have five new street trees. And we have some up down lighting that does not exceed any of the illumination levels as per the land use development ordinance. Black and white, two dimensional graphics of, again, the north elevation, which is the elevation on Johnston Avenue. Six stories in total, fifty nine feet, eight inches in total height. First floor would be ten feet floor to floor, followed by nine foot eight to make up that dimensional difference. And then the remaining floors are at ten foot floor to floor, all the way to the principal roof. The open enclosed amenity area again would be at ten foot in height, but an additional four feet for the elevator bulkhead. We do have an understanding that both the side facade on Whiten Avenue and then also the side facade on Johnston Avenue do back up to the park. So we do provide some colored graphics in a form of cement board. As you can see, we have a red and we have a beige and a gray color that would be a three color pattern. Vertical stacking kind of to match the exterior graphics at the two street facades. Second, three dimensional rendering, again, orange modular teller, terracotta colored brick. Projected awnings at the first floor, and then you have a color wrap of the cement board that faces the park. We have the western elevation, which is the Whiten Street elevation, and again, the side elevation with a light well that faces the park. In closing, a six story standalone building, as you can see in this graphic, sits on the edge of the park. It should not cast shadow across the street or on any of the adjacent properties, because certainly there is none on this block. And again, due to the site improvements and also green elements as part of this application, I, I think it'll be a positive to the neighborhood. This concludes my testimony.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vandermark. I have no questions. The only comment I do have, not to diminish your design, sir, but if we could maybe consider opening the south facing facade that faces that park, maybe open that up to the city mural program. I think that would be a nice touch for Baby Rucker Park there.
We, yeah, we could consider that.
Obviously not a condition, but you know, just something to think about. Anybody else? Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vandermark. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, then we could just move right into Mr. Bellamy to address the, the one requested variance.
Sure, and Mr. Bellamy has been sworn in and qualified tonight, and if he could just confirm that he is still under oath. Okay, thank you, sir.
Great. So just getting into the, the deviation request, it is just the one deviation for the maximum building height, and that's in feet.
As Mister Vandermark said, this is a an isolated lot on a corner, so we are the northwest corner of the block. Due to that location and the orientation of the block, the shadows do cast predominantly on the public right of way. And then surrounding the properties to the south and to the east is the is the park, so there aren't any direct. Residential units uses adjacent to this property. As Mister Harrington said, we are going a little bit above and beyond what's required with the affordable housing bonus, as we're proposing three affordable units. That's approximately nine percent where two affordable units would be required. I did want to just point out, there is one technical aspect of this application. The the land development ordinance does permit for. Properties within the one percent annual chance flood hazard area. The number of feet required to reach the base flood elevation plus one foot is permitted to be added to the maximum building height. In this case, we're we took the conservative approach as we aren't raising the building up to meet those standards. So we are still seeking the height variance. But if we were to utilize that provision, this would be a maximum, a building height that is permitted. With with that provision, as Mister Vandermark said, we are still taking the appropriate flood prevention measures. Of the ground floor space, so we are meeting that that code and and the the project will be up to spec with with. With respect to flood prevention. In my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the the public good here. Mister Vandermark highlighted many of the positive aspects of the project mainly being developing this corner lot. That's currently vacant adjacent to a park, all the streetscape improvements, new street trees, sidewalks, permeable paving. We are adding streetlights, that's promoting safety at this corner lot, again, adjacent to a park, I think that's an important important aspect here. And then we are removing two curb cuts, one on Johnston Avenue and one on. Whiten Street, so again, that promotes walkability, bikeability, especially being adjacent to a park, I think that is a. A great positive improvement of this mixed use development here. I don't see any substantial impairment to the intended purpose of the zone plan, I think we are continuing the purpose and several of the objectives of the redevelopment plan. Providing for neighborhood level retail at the corner, providing for a mixed use building that's in proximity to the light rail station. So I think that is consistent with what the redevelopment plan calls for. With the exception of the building height deviation, we are complying with all other bulk standards of the plan. So I think overall, this the the benefits here would substantially outweigh the detriments, I think that meets. Moving into the purposes of the municipal land use law, it is an appropriate use and development of the property consistent with purpose A. This is a sufficient space, an appropriate location for a mixed use building, consistent with what the redevelopment plan calls for, consistent with purpose G. I think the building has been designed to promote a desirable visual environment to anchor this corner lot location adjacent to the park. And that's consistent with purpose I, so to summarize, I I think this project does meet both the positive and negative criteria. And that the deviation can be granted in that it is justified under the MLUL. That that really concludes my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mister Bellamy, I have no questions, anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir, we appreciate your time.
Okay, that would complete our presentation, I would note for the record that we did receive. Cameron's Flanders report and all of his proposed conditions of approval would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you, council, we appreciate it. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment, please raise your hand, and if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. I see Mister Rosenberg's hand up, I believe he's here for. An application that's up in front of us. Let's just double check that that's what it's about, but.
Okay, I'm trying to promote Jamie Hamm right now. And I'm gonna get, okay, Jamie is joining us and Mister Rosenberg is up here too.
Hi, sorry, I was just, I'm here for the West Side Avenue application, I was just trying to let you know that our attorney was here, you were looking for him earlier.
Gives us an additional unit taking us to ten percent affordable as far as the give back. This application is also providing twenty indoor bicycle parking spaces. Two outdoor bicycle parking spaces with two additional retail spaces at grade at one thousand three hundred and sixty seven and eight hundred and thirty five. This site does not require parking, it is less than sixty feet in width. And therefore not required as part of the redevelopment plan. Okay, motion is made on second, public is closed. And this is Cameron's application, Cam, do you have anything else you want to add? Counsel already agreed to the conditions.
Yes, thank you, Mister Harrington for beating me to that line. I am going to just. Confirm that planning staff agrees with the professional planner testimony given by. The applicant's professional planner, Mister Bellamy. And planning staff agrees, we find that the variance here. Will be de minimis and not have a negative impact on the redevelopment plan and what it seeks to accomplish in this zone. Overall, planning staff was happy with the project and, you know, it was it was good working with. The applicant and I think we've got a good project here, so planning staff recommends approval.
All right, thanks, Cam.
Hey, Mister Chair, like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash one six four is presented to our board tonight.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion as second for approval.
Okay, Vice Chair, Doctor Gonzalez.
Commissioner, Doctor Desai.
Hi.
Commissioner Cruz.
Hi.
Commissioner Green.
Hi.
And Chairman Lexon.
Yeah, I do agree with Mister Bellamy Bellamy's testimony, I don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan. And with that, I'm gonna go by.
Okay, motion carries all in favor with condition.
You too, all right, Cam, if we could, let's bring Mister Rosenberg back up.
Agreed, I know you're gonna be quick, but I do have one application for Mister Harrington before you and also Mister Higgins.
We we're not gonna open up anything after ten PM tonight, anything new. So I think. You know, you're welcome to hang out for a little bit, it's only nine more minutes, but. I think you're just gonna hear a subdivision and then. Go home disappointed. Okay, and.
I've also promoted Mister Delano.
Okay.
Okay, Mister Delano, would you be willing to carry to the next meeting, July twenty fifth, considering we have no.
We have two more cases to hear and eight minutes to do it in.
Yeah, it sounds like we don't have much of a choice there, happy to carry and preserve notice, please.
Okay, okay, thank you, council, so we're gonna carry case P two three dash zero four nine is a conditional use for seven forty seven West Side Ave. To a date certain July twenty fifth with preservation of notice, thank you, council, enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Let's call items sixteen on the agendas, case P two two dash one seven five is a minor subdivision. For seventy four to seventy six Terrace Avenue.
Okay, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a pretty straightforward application where it's a as of right subdivision, and we're asking for two minor. See variances with regard to the two proposed dwellings, so. I did provide notices on this as well, I actually just emailed them to Mister Lampy in event he did not receive them earlier.
Okay, so. Let's call items sixteen on the agendas, case P two two dash one seven five is a minor subdivision. For seventy four to seventy six Terrace Avenue.
Okay, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a pretty straightforward application where it's a as of right subdivision, and we're asking for two minor. See variances with regard to the two proposed dwellings, so. I did provide notices on this as well, I actually just emailed them to Mister Lampy in event he did not receive them earlier.
He's for eighteen on the agenda.
Okay, Mister Delano, would you be willing to carry to the next meeting, July twenty fifth, considering we have no. We have two more cases to hear and eight minutes to do it in.
Yeah, it sounds like we don't have much of a choice there, happy to carry and preserve notice, please.
Okay, okay, thank you, council, so we're gonna carry case P two three dash zero four nine is a conditional use for seven forty seven West Side Ave. To a date certain July twenty fifth with preservation of notice, thank you, council, enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Let's call items sixteen on the agendas, case P two two dash one seven five is a minor subdivision. For seventy four to seventy six Terrace Avenue.
Okay, for the record, Charles Harrington of Connell Foley, on behalf of the applicant. This is a pretty straightforward application where it's a as of right subdivision, and we're asking for two minor. See variances with regard to the two proposed dwellings, so. I did provide notices on this as well, I actually just emailed them to Mister Lampy in event he did not receive them earlier.
I mean, receiving your affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the property. At seventy four dash seventy six Terrace Avenue, it does appear to be in order, Mister Chairman, and we can mark them as A one.
Okay, thank you, council.
Okay, so, yeah, without giving an overview, I'm gonna I'm gonna hand that off to Jeff Lewis as part of his presentation. He's gonna take you through the as of right subdivision to twenty five by a hundred lots. And point out the the proposed two family dwellings with the the respective requested variances. And then Sam will will follow up to address the variances. So I believe Jeff has been promoted.
That that's all right, Mike, go ahead.
Jeff, do you have any testimony you get tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? No, no. Don't hear you. Nothing.
Oh, there you go.
I assume you said yes, correct?
All right, great, yeah.
All right, great, and if you could just state and spell your name, please.
Jeffrey Lewis, J E F F R E Y L E W I F.
Thank you.
Mister Lewis, good evening. Always a pleasure, we've qualified you in the past, your license is current tonight in New Jersey?
Yes, there it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified, but before we. Start, Mister Harrington, I'm not seeing. Anything besides the subdivision on your application, I do see down a little ways, you have a three story building proposed. But I don't see any other language on your application about a. An application for the building.
That's the re-sunshined version has, yeah, that's why it was re-sunshined.
Understood, okay, so I don't have the.
Re-sunshined version.
Sunshined version of the application, Cam, I'll go with your word, is that listed on the application?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Okay, council, I apologize, Mister Lewis, go ahead, the floor is yours, sir.
Great, thank you. Okay. Are we are good on the screen share? Here we're looking at our proposed site plan, as well as on the right, we have a very small vision version of our demolition plan. So the existing site is fifty feet wide by a hundred feet deep. It does have one building located in the center of the building, center of the property. As part of the site plan, we will be demolishing the building and clearing the site. And we are going to be dividing the the property right down the middle.